Good evening councillors and our viewers live streaming tonight's meeting and our members of the gallery. My name is councillor Lena Messina. I'm the mayor of Darabben City Council and the chairperson of tonight's council meeting. It's indeed my pleasure to welcome you all tonight and see so many familiar faces and new faces in the gallery. I declare the meeting open at 6:01pm. Darabben City Council acknowledges the Wondry Warren people as the traditional owners and custodians of the land and waters we now call Darabben and pays respect to their elders, past, present and emerging. Council pays respect to all other Aboriginal, Torres Strait Islander communities in Darabben. Council recognise and pays tribute to the diverse culture, resilience and heritage of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We acknowledge the leadership of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities and the right to self determination in the spirit of mutual understanding and respect. The health and safety and wellbeing of our community has and will always be paramount consideration of this council. Council continues to be guided by the government directives and wants to be able to do the right thing for the health of our community during the COVID-19 pandemic. At Darabben, we're proud ourselves on being a progressive and contemporary council. In the interest of demonstrating leaderships, I have high expectations that we'll be professional in our conduct and the language we use throughout the evening respectful in our debate. The chamber, virtually or in person, is both a workplace and a public space and we have an obligation to ensure that the working environment and public forums are safe for everyone, both emotionally as well as physically. Before I introduce councillors, I would like to say a few words on the recent passing of Phil Sutton. On behalf of council and all council laws, I would like to express our deepest sadness at news of Phil Sutton's recent passing. Phil's life work was led to teach and advocate for the change on environmental and climate issues was dedicated, unwavering and inspiring to so many. As a Darabben local, Phil made a hugely significant contribution as a member of the Climate Emergency Darabben Advisory Committee, which was formed after Darabben Council declared a climate emergency on the 5th of December 2016. Philip was a key member of the community movement that led to council's declaration and this subsequently inspired a Whole Wild World Climate Action Emergency Movement. As Philip said in his presentation at the Darabben Climate Emergency Conference in 2018, "A person who gets a bee in their bonnet about something can often have quite an amazing effect." Philip did have an amazing effect. He leaves an extraordinary legacy and we thank him. Our heartfelt condolences to the family and his close friends. Before we commence, I'd like to acknowledge and introduce the councillors and senior staff who are with us this evening. The deputy mayor, councillor Trent McCarthy.
Good evening, Mayor.
Councillor Emily Demetriades.
Good evening, all.
Councillor Gaetano Greco.
Good evening, everyone.
Councillor Tom Hannan.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone.
Councillor Tim Lawrence.
Good evening, Mayor and everyone.
Councillor Suzanne Newton.
Good evening, everyone.
Councillor Susan Rennie.
Good evening.
And councillor Julie Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, and welcome, everyone. Welcome and good evening. Thank you.
And our officers tonight are Jodie Watson, General Manager of Governance and Engagement, who will be the acting CEO tonight. Unfortunately, Rachel Olivia is unable to join us in person tonight due to unforeseen circumstances. Brett Gamboa, who's the acting general manager of operations and capital. Vanessa Petrie, who's the acting general manager of city sustainability and strategy. Shadi Hanna, who's the acting general manager of communities. And I also welcome an extension to Mr John Watson and municipal monitor. I'm also pleased to inform you that the first two items on this evening's agenda, these being the council plan action and the adoption of the budget. We will also have the services of an Ausland interpreter. Councillors will recall that at this service, we provide this service and the service was provided at the statutory council meeting to elect the mayor and the deputy mayor in October and we will endeavour to provide this service when major matters are presented to council. Thank you and let's get underway. The only apology noted this evening will be the interim CEO, Rachel Olivia. Item number four, disclosures of conflicts of interest. Are there any conflicts to disclose, council laws? There are none? Thank you, noted. Item number five, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. Councillors, could I please have a motion to drop the minutes of the meetings for the ordinary council meeting on the 23rd of May 2020 and the special council meeting held on the 6th of June 2022? Moved by councillor Williams, seconded by councillor Rennie. All those in favour? Thank you. That's been carried unanimously. Item number six is public question time. Councillors, we will now move to this area. For those public question times, reply at the 12th noon today. A response has been prepared where possible and these will be dealt with first, noting that we have received questions on a similar issue. We'll be answering these collectively based on the themes and issues that we cover. Once these are dealt with, I will invite members of the public here in attendance to approach the lectern to ask their questions. I ask that you read your questions as no introductory or background statements are permitted pursuant to section 15.43 of the governance rules. The minutes of these meetings will be recorded and the question in full, subject to it complying with governance rule, will be provided. Please note that public question time will not exceed 30 minutes in duration unless extended by council resolution through a procedural motion, in which case it may be only extended once for a period of 30 minutes. There's something wrong with the microphone. Let's just test that. Is that better? Thank you. Sorry, apologies. Okay, the first question this evening is from Marilyn Johnson of Fairfield. Is Marilyn in the gallery? I'll read her question. "I would like to know how council is going to encourage residents to reduce their landfill waste. Now it is imposing a waste levy in addition to council rates for rate payers with properties worth less than $1.7 million. I would also like to add that my green waste bin is 90% used for plane tree leaves adoring my street. Is it fair that I'm charged for this? And is it fair that not all residents will be charged for the waste levy? I would also like to point out that if I have a small landfill waste bin out once a month, I would not fill it." Thank you, Marilyn, for your question. "Council runs ongoing education programmes to help our community reduce waste. We are currently helping Darabben residents use their green and food waste bins better. It is the biggest opportunity to reduce landfill, which will be reduced cost and pollution. All rate payers will be charged with a public waste rate and the curbside waste charge will be paid by all rate payers who receive the curbside waste collection service." This means that everyone in the community contributes to leave litter from managing street trees. Is Ruth Jolly in the gallery this evening? Welcome, Ruth.
Good evening, Mayor. My apologies, I haven't got my questions in front of me just yet. Here we go. That might make it easier to hear. "In its future Melbourne committee meeting on the 7th of June..." I've just realised that my document hasn't actually updated. Could I request that perhaps you move to the next questionnaire and then recall me in a moment? Would that be okay, Mayor Messina?
Absolutely. I'm happy to pass you on the question if you want me to...
Oh, yes. Would be even more helpful. Thank you so much. Thanks very much. So I'm aware that other councils that are members of the M9 group... Can you still hear me?
Yes, I can, yeah.
That other councils that are members of the M9 group of councils provide a report on the activities of the M9 group. For example, the City of Melbourne presented such a report to its meeting on the 7th of June. However, such reports are absent from the Darabben Council papers and governance reports. Can you advise when will Darabben Council provide a report on the discussions and activities of this alliance in a Melbourne councils?
You want to ask your second and third question, Ruth, at the same time?
Certainly can. "The state government has recently opened a new round of funding for councils to make roads safer for bike riders and pedestrians. Will council commit to seek funding to implement pedestrian and bicycle safety improvements in line with the principles of the refreshed Darabben transport strategy to implement the recommendations identified in Your Street, Your Say, including for improved pedestrian safety at numerous roundabouts through Reservoir, a pedestrian crossing at Elizabeth Street in West Preston, installing separated bike lanes along the length of Kramer Street in West Preston, exploration of options to install safe separated bike lanes on Normby Avenue and High Street in Thornbury?" I believe I had a third question, but it doesn't appear to be in front of me.
And the third question, can I read that out for you?
Yes, certainly. Thank you.
Thank you. "How many schools will be funded or approved to participate in the Octopus School Programme in 2022/23?" Is that your question?
Yes, thanks for referring to Mayor Messina.
Thank you. Thank you very much for following M9. I'm happy to report that I'm the deputy to Lord Mayor Sally Cap in that particular council group. We are members of the M9 and we advocate on issues and project of mutual interest, including the active transport, affordable housing and renewable energy. Council has endorsed an advocacy strategy and our work is endorsed and our work is based on the M9 in this particular strategy. You can read about the M9's work also on m9.org.au and when I attend the M9 council meetings and documented in my full council report under the governance, should be reported under governance, that I'm attending that particular meeting as well. I attend these meetings with the CEO and my participation, as I said, is recorded in the minutes and the council activity reports. In response, the CEO will provide quarterly updates to council through the governance reporting commences in July this particular year. I'm pleased also to say that on August 18th, there'll be an official launch of the M9 at Parliament House to talk about our advocacy strategy there as well. Council will also submit an application to the Transport Accident Commission's Local Governments Grants Programme. If we are successful, funds will help council deliver infrastructure projects identified through the Your Say, Your Street, Your Say programme. Sadly, the Octopus School Programme is not proposed in the 2022/23 financial year. In the 2022/23 financial year, we are proposing to work on road safety with schools through Your Street, Your Say, place making programme.
I'm actually very disappointed to hear that, Mayor Messina, because my previous questions about the Octopus Schools Programme indicated that that would be pursued further by council and I'm sure that many parents in schools will be very sorely disappointed to hear that. My apologies, Mayor. Could I get you just to clarify for me? I wasn't quite sure exactly what your point was around whether or not Darabben Council will receive reports on the activities and achievements of the M9 group of council. Will a report be included in upcoming governance papers?
The CEO's report will commence documentation in July this year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to share the questions this evening because there's a few long-winded ones.
The next question is from Tim Holsworth. Is Tim with us tonight in the gallery? If you'd like to come forward and ask your questions.
Good evening, all. Has Darabben Council applied for its share of the $30 million in the 2022 Local Sports Infrastructure Fund? And if so, which projects have been proposed? Question two, what's the estimated change in revenue in dollars that's been modelled for the 3pm closure option of the Northkirk Public Golf Course? And question three, under the proposed changes to waste charges, will wealthy homeowners with homes over $1.75 million and the commercial sector be better off financially than the rest of Darabben residents?
Thank you for the questions, Tim. I'll answer them in order. So to the first question, "The Local Sports Infrastructure Fund is a statewide competitive state government grants programme. Council has previously accessed funding through this programme to support the construction of the Naranjerry Stadium, the Bill Lorry Oval Pavilion redevelopment, as well as recent sports field lighting upgrades at Mott Moor, Donath and Dole Reserves. Council is currently considering which projects to put forward, subject to the approval of the 2022/23 budget this evening." And question two, "While council has undertaken analysis of the potential impacts of the 3pm shared use model for Northkirk Public Golf Course, that modelling does not reflect financial impacts at this stage. There's still more work to be undertaken and a report will come to council at a future meeting about their options in regard to the operating model." And the third question, "It would be correct that businesses will see a reduction in their overall rates notice. Businesses have been contributing to a curbside waste collection service that they largely do not benefit from via council, as commercial collection services are used by businesses. As a result of separating waste cost selection from general rates, businesses will receive a reduction in their total rates bill and only pay for this service once." Through the separation of waste costs from general rates, the curbside charge is a user fees pays charge in accordance with the revenue rating plan that was adopted last year by council, instead of being charged as a percentage of the property value. The effect of this is that everyone is charged the same fee for the same service, noting that there are concessions based on equity principles to minimise the impact. It is correct that higher value properties will see a reduction in their total rates bill as they contribute a higher amount based on their property value."
So just to clarify from question one, you'll sue the sports infrastructure grant, which I believe finishes on the 12th of July. You'll squeeze in that application in the next two weeks, is that right?
That's correct. Following adoption of the budget, which confirms the budget that would be required to support such an application.
And the projects that were being pursued, are you able to share those?
They're still being considered. I don't believe we're in a position to confirm those. I can refer to the General Manager of Community or General Manager of Operations and Capital if you have any more information. No, not at this stage, but we are working towards that deadline of 12th of July for submissions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next question we have is from Jessica Sullivan of Reservoir. Is Jessica in the gallery this evening?
Good evening, everyone. My question was also about the sports grants and recreation grants that are available from the state and federal government, specifically whether any grants have been applied for or have been sought in regards to supporting the Northkirk Public Golf Course or the building of a 50-metre pool at the Reservoir Leisure Centre. What grants, if any, has DCC applied for in respect to the Northkirk Public Golf Course and Reservoir Leisure Centre? And councillors and officers explain why they're not actively pursuing all possible revenue streams to help support sport and infrastructure in the area, considering that they're adding an extra waste charge because they can't budget with the current income streams?
Thank you for your questions, Jessica. I'll answer them one by one. In terms of your first question, "Council regularly applies to grants and government funding to support the planning, development and construction of sport and recreation infrastructure to support our community. Council is currently continuing to negotiate with state government regarding its offer to support the planning and design to reconfigure the Northkirk Public Golf Course. Council is currently considering which projects to submit for the current funding round of the state government Local Sports Infrastructure Fund, as I just explained to Tim, and the Reservoir Leisure Centre is being considered for the new facilities planning stream of this funding." I also have a response for you with regard to the information surrounding the draft budget. Apologies, we've got a separate answer on a different page, so I'll make sure I don't miss anything. "Council undertook a communications campaign to inform the community of the draft budget process. This included a dedicated page on council's Your Say platform, information on council's website with a banner on the homepage, information in the Your Darabben e-newsletter and various paid and organic posts on the main social media platforms. We also held five in-person pop-up sessions within the community in prominent locations to inform the community and to also answer any questions that people may have. A brochure was also distributed to all households in the community and what we found was that as walkers were used to distribute the brochure. We couldn't always guarantee that they did arrive. We know that we had some challenges with walkers in a few areas where they didn't arrive as expected and that was followed up with the distributor. Council will continue to inform the community via various channels about submissions processes as they emerge through the year."
Thank you. Is Bill Jennings in the gallery this evening? No? Read out Bill's. Bill Jennings from Preston West. He has submitted two questions this evening. The first question is, "What is the annual total cost to Darabben City Council to maintain and keep Darabben Parklands open to the public? And are the Darabben Parklands currently profitable or do they run at a loss to open rate payer?" The second question is, "Can council please update the community if it's going to accept the offer of $200,000 from the Minister for Community Sports to utilise the services of a golf course architect to create a master plan for Northkirk Golf Course? Do you agree that in using this funding, our community might achieve the best nine holes and the best open parkland spaces at the Northkirk Public Golf Course that will fit with the vision for the shared use space that the community has offered in the recent consultation process?" Thanks again, Bill, for your questions. The answer to question number one is, "Council contributes approximately $280,000 to the running of the Darabben Parklands by the DCMC, that Mary Creek Committee. Banyll contributes a similar amount and several other organisations also make small contributions to the running of the DMCC. These amounts do not account for the council officer time. The Darabben Parklands does not return a profit to council, but open spaces across the city generally do not return a profit. Council regards them as an investment for the community. Council is in negotiation with the state about the grant funding and an update will be provided by the Your Say page in due course in relation to the $200,000 contribution from the Minister of Community Sports." The next question we have is from Julie Williams of Thornbury. Is Julie in... Not Julie Williams, the councillor, but Julie Williams.
The other one. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. "Can you please let us know the profit or loss figure for each financial year of 2020/21 for the Northkirk Public Golf Course and advice if the golf course is currently profitable in 2022?" Second question is, "What are the total number of rounds played at the Northkirk Golf Course for each financial year 2018, 19, 20, 21? Please advise of the most up-to-date figures of rounds played at Northkirk Public Golf Course in this current financial year of 2022." My third question is, "At the council meeting on 8 April 2021, the then CEO Sue Wilkinson answered a question by West Preston resident Bill Jennings. He was inquiring if the numbers of games played each month at the golf course could be recorded and reported on a quarterly basis. The CEO's answer recorded in the minutes was that a quarterly update of rounds played shall be provided on an ongoing basis. Could council please advise if that quarterly report has been happening since the CEO offered that answer? If it is happening, where can the public find that report? And if it isn't happening, when and where will the public be provided with this information?" Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Good to see you again. Thank you for your questions. "In the 2019/2020, the cost to council of the Northkirk Public Golf Course was $166,887. In the 2020/21 year, that cost was reduced to $70,876. In 2021/22, in the year to date to May 2022, that cost was $35,131." The answer to question two, "In 2017/2018, 18,227 rounds of golf were played at the Northkirk Public Golf Course. In 2018 to 2019, 18,559 rounds were played. In 2019 to 2020, 19,997 rounds were played. In 2020/21, the number of rounds increased to 24,494 and the year to date to May is 23,892 rounds of golf that have been played so far in 2021/22 year. Council has been reporting the number of rounds of golf at Northkirk Public Golf Course on a monthly basis through the Your Say Darabben Northkirk Public Golf Course webpage, which can be found at yoursay.darabben.fic.gov.au/northkirkgolfcourse." The figures were reported as part of the frequently asked questions section in response to the question, "How many people play golf at the Northkirk Public Golf Course 2020/21 year compared with the previous 10 years?" I hope that answers your questions.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. May I ask if Tony Sullivan of Reservoir is in the gallery this evening? Good evening and welcome, Tony.
Thank you and good evening. My first question is, "Can you please confirm whether you, other councillors or any council officers have applied for sporting grants from the federal and/or state governments? If so, have applications been sought to assist with the refurbishment of the Reservoir Leisure Centre, including a 50-metre pool as widely desired by that community and to accommodate the expected increased population growth in the coming years and ensure the continued operation of the Northkirk Public Golf Course as a nine-hole sporting facility to accommodate the diverse community who avail themselves of this vital amenity, among them children, seniors, disabled peoples, those on the neurodiverse spectrum too. For many, this amenity provides more than simply a sporting challenge. It also provides invaluable social and community connections too. Equally important, protecting the significant and documented biodiversity which lives within the golf course grounds and the sensitive ecosystems which they rely." There are two reports, one by the University of Melbourne and another one that was actually done in Sweden, looking at 190 golf courses and came to the same conclusions as the Melbourne University one did. My second question is, "Can you please explain why developers can breach council-endorsed plans without prior council approval, without adjoining property owners being notified, thereby denying us the opportunity to appeal any concerning changes? These processes are required throughout the planning approval stage, however, are easily circumvented by applying for changes post-council endorsement, basically making it null and void. An example, the developer next door to me failed to adhere to the council-endorsed plans and when I brought this to the planning department's attention, the breaches were allegedly investigated and I was later informed by phone that the plans had been amended to include the changes and apparently the developer had paid a fee to have these amendments approved. I was also advised that if I have any issues, I should go to VCAT. How is it fair and reasonable that safeguards and securities provided in council endorsed plans to protect the amenity and privacy of adjoining properties can be rendered null and void post-endorsement because a process exists enabling developers to merely apply for amendments and pay a fee and once approved by council's planning department, the only avenue available to impact on property owners is to appeal the council's decision at VCAT?" Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions.
Tony, don't answer those one at a time. So starting with your first one, I can confirm, as I have for a couple of other questions, the council has sought grants and funding for many of our sporting infrastructure projects, including the recent Naranjerry Stadium, Bill Lorry Oval Pavilion redevelopment, as well as recent sports field lighting upgrades at Mott Moor, Donath and Dole Reserves. Council is currently considering which projects to put to the state government Sports Infrastructure Grants Programme. The deadline for that is 12th of July, so it's coming soon and we are waiting for the adoption of the budget tonight and note that the applications do have strict eligibility criteria. The Reservoir Leisure Centre is being considered for the new facilities planning stream and council is currently in negotiation with state government regarding its offer of support for the planning and design to reconfigure the Northkirk Public Golf Course. On question two, Tony, the manager will call you tomorrow to discuss your concerns so that they can be addressed in full detail. What I can confirm for you is that the matter has been investigated by council statutory planning unit and planning compliance unit and I note the concerns you've raised about that, so we'll leave that for that discussion tomorrow. Investigations to date have found that due process has been followed and the development has been constructed in accordance with the approved plans, but the manager will be in touch tomorrow with you.
Thank you.
Sorry, apologies. That's all that I had for you. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. Thank you for your attendance. Is Pamela Newman of Northkirk in the gallery this evening? No? I'll read out a question. Pamela has submitted two questions. The first one is, "What impact on the environment is expected if the entire golf course is opened as a park and domestic animals are able to access the entire space, including the sensitive Mary Creek Zone?" And question number two, "Golf is one of the few spots elderly residents can enjoy. Why is council failing to invest in golf, lawn bowls and tennis in Darabben?" Thank you, Pamela, for your questions. The first question is, "On the 23rd of May 2022, council endorsed shared use of the..." shared use of the Northcote Golf Course site, committing to retaining a nine golf, nine-hole golf course and opening up 5.71 hectares of open space for general community use. You are correct that dogs can sometimes cause damage to sensitive areas. Dogs must be kept on a leash in Darabhan expecting designated dog, dog off leash areas and no decision has been made by this in regards to the new open space at Northcote Golf Course. Question number two, council support, answers to the question number two. Council supports many sport and recreational activities for older community members as well as golf, tennis and lawn bowls. For example, Reservoir Leisure Centre offers a living longer, living stronger programmes and arthritis classes. The new multi-use courts at John Kane Memorial Park include equipment and line markings to support tennis. Council is investing in reconfiguration of Northcote Public Golf Course to support the continuation of golf. Council's agreements with our lawn bowls and tennis clubs focus on maximising participation and encourages clubs to invest in renewing those facilities as part of their obligations. The next question we have is from Maureen Wilson of Reservoir. Is Maureen in the gallery? Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Ma'am.
Good evening, Ma'am. My question is regarding waste and rubbish. So it's regarding the Darabhan Waste and Recycling Strategy, which replaced the Waste and Litter Strategy 20 to 25. The council conducted a review over the last 18 months to identify opportunities and innovation. Is that review available for public review so we can be informed by it and see, have a greater understanding of how the strategy responds to the issues and opportunities that were identified in that review? Secondly, the strategy has an action plan that sets out current, intermediate and long-term goals. There are no timelines allocated in this action plan, nor is there a published work plan that sets out concrete actions that will be required to achieve actual outcomes. The work plan should set a clear pathway to change and have clear performance targets that would be measurable and reported back to both council and the community. Can the council provide details of such a work plan? Or if there is not one, what the plan is to provide one? I think it's essential that we look towards waste and rubbish with our growing population, which is a planned population growth, taking into account both our current residents and future generations.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen, for your questions. Especially in the interest of waste and recycling. Yes, the information about the 2018, 2019 Waste and Recycling Review is publicly available. We plan to report on many of the priority actions through the council plan as part of our annual report. The manager will call you tomorrow to discuss further if you wish. Since the strategy was adopted by council, there's been expansion of the Food Organics and Food and Green Waste Service and upgraded KP Hardeman Reserve using recycled content, amongst other things. The implementation and timing of the action plan is yet, is set each year and is part of council's budget and council's action plan process. But I'm happy to take any questions that you have also out of the chamber to discuss areas, but they are in our council plan and also in our council progress up to date, but an officer can call you tomorrow should you wish to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Extension of time, yes. Can I move by councillor, Renée Second by councillor Greco? All those in favour? We're extending time for another 30 minutes, so there'll be 32 minutes and 38 seconds on the clock. Is Annette Calckbrenner of Thornbury in the, in the gallery this evening? Welcome, Annette. Good to see you again.
Hello. In 2013, neighbours of Northcote Golf Course were considered stakeholders. Why have not we been, why have we not been included or consulted in meetings?
And the next question?
And the next question? Why hasn't Darabhan council applied for the sports grant that the local government minister wrote to you about invited you to?
Thank you. Thanks for your questions. Council undertook extensive community engagement regarding the future of the Northcote Golf Course. More than 7,000 people took up the opportunity to participate and their views have been carefully considered by this council. I can also confirm that council received your survey response. The answer to question number two, council's in discussions with the Department of Sport and Recreation regarding the grant and the state government has offered towards the reimagining of the Northcote Golf Course. Is that the sports grant that you're referring to? Yes. Thank you. Is Caroline in the gallery this evening? Welcome. Good to see you again, Caroline.
So we have to rush through in two minutes, last time? Sorry about that rush. Thank you, Mayor, councillors, monitor and others. I have a question in regard, after my budget submission on the new waste charges, what steps will be taken to reduce waste? I've brought my rubbish again, Mayor. You love seeing my rubbish. This is two weeks of rubbish. It's down to 30 grams a week. That's less than 2.08 kilos a year. What will my charge be and can I opt out from the fee for the waste charge? How will council prevent contamination of bins? As many small properties near me keep their bins permanently on the street. I do have another question, not related to this particular meeting. Is it all right to ask?
Of course.
I submitted three questions on the 17th of the 3rd, 21, regarding changes made to the Jica Jica in the park. Infrastructure removed since, since I asked these questions includes climbing frame, sand pit and cubby. I have no record of a reply and I apologise because I'm not good on the computer and it may be there and asked that the council respond to this request. And one of the questions was, why has there been no consultation by the committee, the many users of this site, about its closure to the groups using Jica Jica in the park? My councillor, I met with my councillor Tom Hannan and the manager of governance, Jodie Watson, and they did express to me that the agreement with the Jica Jica management needed to be tightened. My question is, has this happened and could I have a reply to that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Caroline.
Thank you for the questions, Caroline. I'll respond to those one at a time. On the first one, I can confirm that council runs ongoing education and programmes to help our community reduce waste. We're currently focusing on food waste and around half of a Darabhan rubbish bin is actually containing food waste. Helping Darabhan residents use the green and food waste bin is our biggest opportunity to reduce landfill, which will reduce costs and pollution. On your second question, the curbside waste collection services charge will be $267.55 in the 2022, 23 financial year, with concessions applied to properties of lower value to make it fairer and equitable. Unfortunately, there is not an opt-out option for curbside collection service. Councils must provide these services according to state government legislation and the charges applied to all residential properties. Similarly, many councils have rolled out similar food and green waste services and have achieved very low contamination rates. So in terms of your concern around contamination, we are not expecting contamination to be a major challenge with our bin waste. In relation to your last question, Caroline, I do recall us having a conversation around the concern around lack of community consultation on the change at Jica Jica. I can confirm the response was provided to in the meeting on the 17th of March with regard to the three questions you raised in the meeting. The response provided was, as you've noted, the Oldest Gardens Community Centre is managed by Jica Jica Community Centre. While council provides annual funding and facility use to Jica Jica, council is not involved in decisions regarding program delivery at this centre or their other sites. These were matters for Jica Jica Committee of Management. Council understood at the time that the centre is not closing and the Jica Jica Committee of Management is planning to make changes in how the space was used. Council also understood at the time that the garden is being planned for by the Jica Jica Committee of Management to enhance the current outdoor space at the centre. Decisions regarding the garden were to be made by the Committee of Management in consultation with council for matters which were relevant, according to the current lease agreement in place. The decisions that were made at that time were not made about the specific choice of plans, however, council officers would work closely with Jica Jica staff to ensure the selection of plans was suitable for the area. With regard to the lease, Caroline, one of the conversations we had had was creating that connection between the lease obligations we have with, for council properties, property leases, and how we actually ensure that they enshrine the principles of the new Local Government Act into those leases, so the principles of community consultation and engagement. That is work that will happen progressively as leases come to the end of life to then include those elements within new leases. I hope that that answers your questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Is Ruby of Thornbury in the gallery this evening? Welcome, Ruby.
Sorry, I'm not good at talking. My first question as a student, I can only play golf after 3pm. Why has the decision been made to close the golf course at 3pm? I only have one question.
Oh, only have one question? Okay.
Did you want to ask the second question?
I've got, I've got the second question.
Sure.
What studies have been done to justify closing the golf course at 3pm? Is that your second question, Ruby?
Yep.
Thank you. Council has not made a decision to close the course after 3pm. Council called for a briefing by council officers on whether that was a feasible option and has not yet formed a position. Council would consider these options at a future council meeting. Thank you for coming, Ruby. Are there any further questions from the gallery? Welcome, John. Mr Nugent.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
My name is John Nugent and I live in Epping. Mayor Messina, before I start, I'd just like to go back to the last meeting. You took my three questions. One question was read, which I thought was going to be answered, but there was two other questions, one about the lights up at Keon Park and two about number of council staff. I've rang Times, been down to customer service to find out, to get an answer. I still haven't got a reply to my questions and I also wanted the meeting with the acting CEO and the general manager of governance and engagement, one-on-one, as, as my questions will refer a little bit later on. Anyway, that's why I want to get those followed up, please, so I can get the answers to like the last lot of meetings.
Thank you, Mr Nugent. And I understand that we did speak that following day at 4.30 as promised that we would do so. Just in relation to your questions in terms of those matters that are operational, can I, yeah, because I'm not too sure how that process was followed through?
Certainly. Thank you for the questions, Mr Nugent. It's nice to see you again. I can confirm the response has been sent to your home address. It may be in, in transit, but I am aware that it's been sent, but I do have a response I can give you tonight if that's helpful.
Listen, just put it in customer service. I'll be down Wednesday to pick them up, okay? Because the mail's pretty slow up my end of the town, you know? Anyway, let's get on to my questions. My question is about the special meeting held on the 24th of November. In the letter I received from council, I was advised at the meeting held on the 24th of November to elect a mayor for, for the, for the mayor for the 21, 22 council year was closed to the public. As a small number of family members were able to attend and adhere to the requirements of the pandemic order of the time. Mayor Messina, my question is, could you please advise how many council staff present, including hallkeepers and catering, catering, catering staff? How many family members were invited and attended? And could council post out the copy of the pandemic order, which allows family members to attend these meetings? That's question one.
Thank you, Mr Nugent. From my understanding, I think you asked a derivative of that question last council, council meeting, I think it was answered. I don't know the answers to those questions.
Well, that's why I'm asking. It's taken the question a little bit further. I did ask a question about it now. No, well, what, what was said, Mayor, was that the, there was basically an answer to it and this is the questions arose from the letter that I received. You know, it said, I didn't know about, they said that you could attend people to through pandemic order and so forth.
From my understanding at the time, and I'm just going back one in the clock to November, my understanding was that we, the CEO at the time, Ms Wilkinson, did follow government directives in terms of the pandemic legislation or the government directives then. Each councillor was offered, I think, five members to attend that evening. I don't know in total how many were actually in the gallery nor how many staff were. Are you trying to work out the density limits based on the government directives? I don't, I can certainly get somebody from the operations area to attend to those questions. I don't know them at the top of my head.
That will be fine if you just ask, answer these questions and.
Yeah, we don't know what they, I don't know what they might, what they are.
That's fine, you know, I'm just waiting for your answer and then I'll have to decide.
Take that on notice. Thank you, Mr Nugent.
That's fine. My second question, Mayor, is Mayor Messina, you know, and I cancelled our meeting with you and you'll see how in general manager of governance and so forth, as I could not have Mr Brian Shanahan as my observer. I have informed council staff that I am not willing to meet the CEO and the general manager. I'm, I'm, no, I said I, I am willing to meet the acting CEO and general manager on one-on-one, but no one has advised me, no one has advised me why Mr Brian Shanahan cannot be my observer as he's a former Northcote councillor and he would make an ideal observer.
Thank you, Mr Nugent. That is an operational manner, so matter, so I'll address that to the acting CEO.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. Mr Nugent, what I'd suggest is that either myself or Rachel Olivier will contact you tomorrow to explain those reasons. I don't think it's appropriate that that be discussed publicly.
You have another question, Mr?
Yes. Mayor Messina, my question is about council meeting last, or the last council meeting held on the 23rd of May. Could you please advise why the police were called when Mr Brian Shanahan was standing on the footpath? Also, are, are council wasting police resources?
Thank you, Mr Nugent. As it is operational again, I will direct that to the CEO, acting CEO.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. My understanding is that from the perspective of those situations, of which there have been several, the police have only been called where there's been a refusal to leave the premises and not cause disturbance at times that has included behaviour towards both our staff as well as our security staff through an agency that has been inappropriate and offensive.
Can I just say one thing, Ms Wilson? That's, that seems very incorrect because I was standing next to Mr Brian Shanahan when he was there and your security staff is very rude to people. I asked them what, what this, just tonight, what's this things out the front? And they told me decorations. Now, I think they have, I would just say proactive, looking for disturbance and so forth, but Mr Shanahan, I was, I was standing with him, standing on the footpath and he's entitled to be there. What Mr Shanahan was doing was not breaking any law and so forth, and that's why I wanted to know why were the police called?
Thank you, Mr Nugent. We have had several complaints from members that have attended the gallery and in addition to that emails about how uncomfortable they have been when there's been disruptions in our gallery and we have had operational matters to ensure that, if I may please, the public safety of, of our community, first and foremost, inappropriate behaviour should not be, should not be having, we should not have any appropriate behaviour in the gallery. So that is the first reason why that is taking place. But we have discussed this at length many times.
When the question asked and there should be a question.
That is my answer.
Well, I, I don't agree with it.
You don't have to agree with it.
I know, but I, I say you are severely wrong in what you're saying. To my knowledge, it's only ever been once, that was on the 22nd of March 21, when Mr Shanahan and I were both suspended from council meeting.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr Nugent. I can actually tell you that in the last six years, Mr Shanahan has, has been banned from attending the gallery many times due to inappropriate. attending the gallery many times due to inappropriate behaviour, when community members, members of our council and our staff have felt unsafe, have been, had been feeling unsafe based on his inappropriate behaviour. He's aware of that, and that is an item between councillor, sorry, Mr Shanahan and the CEO. Is it operational? And that has been addressed with Mr Shanahan himself. Thank you very much for your three questions. Are there any other members of the gallery who have concerns, questions? Welcome. Malcolm Sirian. To see you again. Are you excited with the new intercultural centre that's growing before your eyes? It looks really...
Yes, thank you, absolutely.
Looks amazing.
Okay, my, my other question, making a submission, this is in relation to the 50-metre pool. I know you all are, you're the leaders of this community, so I'm calling upon you all to support the construction of the 50-metre pool. Because if that is, if that is denied, in the eyes of a lot of migrants, it'll be seen as undermining the principles of multiculturalism, you see? And also, and social justice, because we live in Darabben, and wherever we live, whether you live in Reservoir or you live in Northkirk, we must have the same opportunities.
Thank you.
If you are denied opportunity by, when a resident lives in Reservoir, that he or she does not have the opportunity of 50-metre pool, I think that's a disadvantage. I think as councillors, I hope that you will, because we are committed to multiculturalism.
Sorry, sorry, do you have a question? Sorry.
I'm making a statement only.
Okay.
So I'll just finish quickly. I think it's also important, because we also want migrant kids to become very successful in sporting arenas, because one of the things that we have witnessed, Australians love sports people, they adore them, they love them. Imagine a migrant kid, because unfortunately, if you look at the swimming teams now, 99% of the swimming personnel who are competing are Europeans. You do not see Sri Lankans and Africans swimming. So I think it's important, in the long term, create opportunities for migrants to become great swimmers, become, and achieve success in swimming pool. And if they are successful in swimming pool, they'll be, they will be loved by the wider Australians. Because one thing that we painfully have to acknowledge, there's a gap between European migrants and non-European migrants. And that we see also the refugee question. The Ukrainian refugees are loved, but Asian refugees are not as loved as much as the Ukrainian refugees. Similarly, the migrant communities are not seen as Australians, they are just seen as workers, consumers, not as Australian citizens. But if imagine migrants become swimming champions, those perceptions will change. So I, so most, so the point I'm trying to say, on the basis of principles of multiculturalism and social justice, I think a Reservoir resident must have access to 50-metre pool, that's one. But it is also, in the long term, if we encourage migrant childrens to get engaged in these swimming activities, we can transform that certain gap that exists between migrants and the European migrants. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Do you have any further questions from the gallery, please? Please come forward and state your name, your suburb, just your name and your suburb.
How do you know, please?
Yeah. Good to see you. Good to see you.
This might be out of order, but I represent the men shed in each reservoir. The men are really getting worried for the last two years with the virus and the building thing. We all want to know, how long is it going to take to get the plans through? The plans have been submitted to council, the council have looked after the shed and the community centre for years, but I just sit in here brooding about it, and as I said to them today, I'm going to ask.
Absolutely, I'm going to get the...
Anything be done, they'll speed it up a bit. Because two years is a long time for the council and everyone in the area to miss out on the service that they do, because they're a good asset to the community.
Absolutely.
Three years we've done nothing. We are just getting together, talking, and just trying to keep the men together.
I'll get Ms Petrie-Vanessa to call you tomorrow and give an update to the person that put in the application for the men shed at Reservoir.
And I'd like to take another liberty of thanking the staff, how, what, three months ago?
Can't hear you, Miss, can't...
Three months ago, at the last meeting I managed to attend. Oh, sorry. I used to this thing. How the staff come to my rescue, they thought I needed help, and it was very touching. And I'm, sorry, I'm not used to have to do this, but I wanted to make sure I said it in public. The staff is wonderful. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Do we have any further questions? We have 10 minutes left. Thank you, please approach and please state your name and your suburb. Sorry, it's because I'll... Just one moment, you've already asked questions, have you not?
Yeah, I asked two, but I had a third that was cut for being more than three.
You can only ask three questions? It's a, it's a third question, sorry, okay.
So, the pensioner rebate for general rates hasn't increased since 2013, 2014 budget, and it was only, it's only available to aged pensioners, disability pensioners and DVA cardholders, it's not available to low-income cardholders or people on single payments. The new waste charge outside of the rates only offers concessions if a property is valued below $500,000, but does not take into account the income of the rate payer to provide relief to those experiencing financial hardship. A high-income person in a property that's worth $499,000 will receive the concession, but a low-income person in a property worth $501,000 will be charged up to $100 a year more, and then if it's over $750,000, they're charged even more. Why doesn't Darabben Council offer any rate relief for those experiencing financial hardship who are not also a pensioner? Has council considered extending the pensioner rebate to those, to include those on the low-income card? Why has council introduced the waste charge without any relief available to financially vulnerable people such as pensioners and low-income earners? And why hasn't the pensioner rebate increased with the cost of inflation since 2013?
Thank you for your questions, Jessica. Just in relation to parts of those questions, council will be considering an adoption of the council plan this evening. Some of those areas have been discussed by council laws, not only now, but also in the past, and they've been debated a few times in this particular gallery. In relation to a financial hardship policy, council does have a financial hardship policy that has been endorsed this evening as well, in this particular gallery, and that was submitted and extended during the COVID period last year as well. I hope that answers your questions. And I'm going to put it over to Ms Watson, sorry.
If I may, Mayor, thank you. Jessica, just in relation to financial hardship and the provisions available through the change with regards to waste, I can confirm that the safety net concession is the concession that actually captures that cohort of people that you're concerned about. It's not just a concession for pensioners, the safety net concession actually essentially nets out the impact of the waste charge implementation. So for those on low income, they are eligible to apply for that safety net concession. Where there's genuine hardship, it's a simplified process, so that is available to people subject to declaration and decision by council tonight. With regard to the pensioner rebate, I'll take that one on notice and come back to you separately. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Sorry, I can't hear you, Caroline. Did you want to? Is it a process question?
Would you consider seniors' cardholders having a reduction in the costs as well for the waste?
Okay, that is...
Just said you were going to talk about it.
Thank you, Caroline. So if I understand that question correctly, it's not about somebody who has a, who's on a pension, somebody who has a seniors' card being separate, is that correct?
Yeah, just would you include, would you include seniors', seniors' card on that production, production?
No, I think you are, so just bear with me. So from a pensioner perspective, I can confirm that the safety net is automatically applied to anybody that we know who is a pensioner, so they don't need to apply for the safety net should they have an impact as a result of the waste charge. With regard to seniors' cardholders, separate to a pension concession, that is something that we would need to take away and look at on notice. At the moment, it's not included. Thank you.
Sorry, any other questions? I think there was. Thank you, welcome.
Hi, I'm Tony Sullivan, Reservoir.
Just one moment, can I just confirm, because I need to go through governance. My understanding is you can only ask, have asked two questions, okay. I don't recall, I have to go back through my notes. Thank you, welcome.
In reference to the behaviour of people within the gallery, and you mentioned a particular person and their behaviour warranted them being ejected. I attended the council meeting regarding the golf course options A and B, which were subsequently modified. My question is, why was the behaviour of the unlock group, who, one of whom, when he got up to speak, said, can you feel the anger in the room? Why was that person not censured for behaviour which was threatening to me as a golfer? Made my wife feel sick? And yet, no consequences for him?
I, I, thank you, and that is, that was a great question, thank you. First and foremost, that evening, as well as right now, there was some clapping happening in the audience. I didn't hear, I don't recall that statement being made. I'm sorry that that statement was made to you and you felt that that was inappropriate. I don't recall that statement. I'm sorry about that. That hasn't been brought to my attention. Have you brought that to anybody's attention since that meeting? And I'm sorry you were exposed to that. There was, it was very, very loud that evening. We did, I did call from the gallery to ask for silence on a number of occasions, and I'm sorry that that wasn't, it's a little bit different when it, when somebody's threatening somebody else in terms of violence and elevated voices, and that's what's happened in the past. That is not the same behaviour that was demonstrated in that evening, but I'm happy. I don't know, I don't recall at that particular time he said those statements, but I'm happy for us to address it and review the tape if we need to.
I might add to that, Mayor Messina, certainly at that meeting, I became aware of some behaviour of that nature. I didn't hear that particular comment, but I did become aware of individuals making comments to people as they were coming up to speak. I removed myself from my chair and went and asked for security to come in. So security actually came and sat in the front row of the meeting for the remainder of the meeting as a result of some of that behaviour. And I did speak to a number of individuals with regards to comments they were making to us and to be polite and respectful.
Just a follow-up, none of that occurred during the question time?
Oh.
Thank you, I didn't acknowledge, realize that during question time.
I didn't realize that, so I'm happy to address that, address that after the meeting or tomorrow. I'm sorry you were exposed to other comments outside of public question time, Mr Sullivan.
Me too, Mr Sullivan.
Are there any further questions? Thank you, that ends public question time. Thank you very much for your attendance this evening. Item number seven petitions, my understanding is there is a petition to be tabled, Mr Grec, councillor Greco.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I do have a petition which has been handed to me by officers. It's a, it's a petition by Dr Anna Ariaratnam, and the petition is by at least 20 people that have validly signed the petition, and a further 65 petitioners that don't seem to comply with the petition guidelines. And the petition is regarding to the removal of parking spaces in the reservoir area, and I'll read out the text of the petition and for councillors and for members of the audience. We, the tenants, patients and customers of North Reservoir Medical Centre and Reservoir Pharmacy on Glasgow and Massey Avenue Reservoir, petition regarding the removal of parking spaces and the placement of garden beds. Removal of existing parking spaces, this area is a very busy precinct and requires more parking spaces, not less. The extra garden beds created could have been, could have been three extra parking spaces or more. The high concrete edging of the garden beds on the outer car space on Glasgow Avenue make it impossible for people trying to get out of their cars safely, as there is insufficient space for them to exit their cars, especially if they have mobility aids or are frail or disabled. We ask you to consider these factors and install the extra parking spaces as soon as possible and remove the three large garden beds. Mayor Messina, I put a motion to refer this to the CEO for consideration and a response.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second by councillor Rennie, all those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously, thank you. Are there any further petitions this evening? Is there a nun? We'll move to the items on the agenda. I have a statement to read out, councillors. We have a number of significant items on our agenda this evening, and I'm committed to ensuring we deal with all businesses listed within this, within the time limits we have. To this end, whilst I'm permitting questions of officers prior to the commitments, commitments, amendments, commencement of the debate of each item, as permitted by the governance rules, I'll be exercising my right under the governance rules to limit questions and direct the debate to commence when I'm determined sufficient questions have been occurred. I remind councillors that every item on our agenda has been subject of comprehensive council briefings, and you've been given ample opportunity to be informed about the issues under considerations. I will make some specific comments regarding how I propose to deal with item 8.2 in the adoption of the budget manner when we get to the item. Councillors, the first item, this report we have to consider this evening is item 8.1, 2022-2023 council plan, action plan. Are there any questions to the officers regarding this item? There are none? Do I have a motions, a motion? Councillor, councillor Lawrence?
Yes, Mayor Messina, I rise to move the officer recommendation on this item.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Rennie. Councillor Lawrence, would you like to speak to the item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Messina. This item is, addresses a council plan, Darabben Council Plan for 2021 to 2025. Got a number of items on there that I invite the community to look at. It's a product of the new council, in considerable consultation and discussion over the whole 18 months. And so, people will note things that, themes, some big themes in this, in this council plan, that are different perhaps from the plan for the previous council. And so this council plan reflects some ambitious infrastructure at the top of it, including the Northkirk Aquatic Centre, developing BT Connaught Pavilion Reservoir, and building Darabben Intercultural Centre that we've heard mentioned tonight. It also includes planning for infrastructure going forward. The responsibility of this council is to undertake the necessary planning to expand facilities for a growing population. And those things are listed here, including Reservoir Leisure Centre, activating Edwards Lake Boathouse, and building new kindergarten facilities, and of course, a feasibility study for a global learning hub in Preston. I won't go through all these, obviously, there's a continuation of a commitment to climate change, and in particular, deepening commitment towards justice for First Nations people. But I will just talk briefly, that this plan is implemented with our community, and it's also implemented with a number of charity organisations, some of which I serve on as in a different role. Diverse Reservoir Neighbourhood House, and Saris Care, who was here briefly in Darabben and delivered $400,000 worth of new clothing to low-income people during the pandemic. And Mayor Messina, you came down and saw volunteers and who we were helping there. So, this plan here is really our KPIs as a collective, as councillors. So, this plan here is really our KPIs as a collective, as councillors. But I think also it's made me reflect about what's going to go forward in the next two, three years. So, I've made a decision to donate my whole council allowance to Saris Care, who are doing this work not just in this city but other cities. Because we want to achieve a vision, need to collectively and personally achieve. And we will be talking later about the $15,000 going to Reservoir Neighbourhood House for material aid. So, it's very important that we actually recognise those charities in our city.
Thank you councillor Lawrence, councillor Rennie?
Very briefly, I'd like particularly to thank the hundreds of staff at Darabin City Council who have turned our vision into this reality in paper in terms of what council is going to deliver in the next 12 months. It's pretty impressive and I really commend this to our community. The plan also transparently articulates those actions that have been carried forward from last year because perhaps they didn't progress as quickly as we hoped, actions that have been brought forward and highlights some of the extraordinary work moving forward. I know certainly that in the next few months, one of the things I'm most looking forward to is the completion of the new intercultural centre. But that's just one of dozens, if not hundreds, of exciting projects, thank you.
Thank you councillor Rennie, are there any further speakers? As there are no further speakers, I've put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously, thank you councillors. The next report we have to consider this evening is the adoption of the budget 2022-2023, incorporating the four-year budget revenue rating plan, rates financial hardship policy and the declaration of a special charge for Reservoir Village Business Precinct, a special waste collection service rate, curbside waste collection service charge and associated concessions. Councillors, this item deals with the adoptions of our budget for the next 12 months plus a range of related and supportive financial matters. Before we commence, may I thank our officers for the significant work that has been undertaken over the last 12 months that brings us to this point where council are considering these matters tonight. I always acknowledge just the significant time all councillors have devoted to the briefing discussions relatively collectively and I report collectively. I proposed at the following debate, we have decisions later on to vote. I will group up the items number as per the recommendations when we move forward. So, I noticed that there's a councillor who's got their hand up. Yeah, I thought your hand went up councillor. Do you have a question?
Yes, I do have a question.
To the officers, just before we do that, can I invite the officers? Sorry, I saw your hand go up in my peripheral vision. Before we ask the questions, I just want to note that during the, after we enter into the debate, I will separate the recommendations and councillors will vote on the recommendation based on five different factors. And I also seek the councillor corporation to support this debate and with these issues in mind. Number one, the recommendation of item number one and two, the recommendations of six to seven declaration of the curbside waste service charge and public waste service rate and associated concessions. Recommendations number three into five, the declaration of a special rate for Reservoir Business District. Recommendations eight to nine, declaration of pensioner rebate and concession for properties owned and managed by Aboriginal Housing Victoria. Recommendation 10 to 15, the adoption of the budget revenue rating plan, rates financial hardship policy. And the following recommendations will be 16 and beyond. But before we move that, I'll ask councillor Dimitri Artis.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted some clarity based on what you've just said about splitting the budget. So, the first sections are declarations, which I'm assuming means that we're declaring that we want them in the budget, but then the last option is to actually approve the budget? How do, what's the difference between the first three, four sections and the, and 10 to 12, which is the adoption of the budget? So, here, I believe here we're not just voting for the adoption of the budget, we're also voting for a declaration?
Thank you councillor Dimitri Artis, I might put that over to Ms Watson?
Certainly, thank you for the question councillor Dimitri Artis. In terms of the way in which the recommendation is structured, we appreciate that there's a lot in this report. And so, what we've tried to do is to separate it out in a way that enables council to make decisions for the key elements. So, the declaration of the curbside service charge and the public waste rate is a formal, formal part of the legislative mechanism that declares those, much the same as the special rate for Reservoir Business Precinct. The difference being obviously that if the waste changes, they also come with accompanying concessions. And so, we have grouped those under a heading in the report for you. Separately, there is the special rate for Reservoir Business District to declare. The declaration is the formal part. So, in March, you notified the community of your intent to declare. And this is now following community consultation, the declaration decision. The budget itself is followed at the bottom of the recommendation because it is subject to the previous elements. So, if, for example, council was not to resolve to make some of the earlier parts of the decision recommendation, the budget may need to be reconsidered as to whether it can be adopted in its current form without change. Does that make sense? So, the, the budget is a more holistic decision.
So, just, just a clarification on that, if the, one of the declarations is voted against, does that mean it doesn't get accepted into the budget?
If.
When we adopt it?
So, if you did not proceed with the declaration of one of the charges, the special charge for Reservoir Business District has less impact because that money is essentially gathered on behalf of the traders, which is quite different to the two waste charges. If the waste charge or waste rate were not resolved to be resolved, we would not be able to adopt the budget tonight. We would in fact need to make an adjustment to the budget to find the money that would need to be required to fill the gap.
Okay, so, sorry, so just clarification, if we do vote down one of those, we can't, one of those items, we can't actually proceed to the budget?
That's correct. We would need to call a special council meeting and revise the budget in between.
Do you have any further questions councillor Dimitri Artis? Councillor Williams?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I've been asked, are we going to be asking anybody from, from the gallery if they would like to put in a submission regarding the budget?
My understanding is the budget submissions have already been addressed prior to, through the process to tonight. I didn't realise that there were, there were members of the gallery that were making a submission in person this evening. My understanding is that they've already done that through the process of public submission, through the process of the community consultation.
I made inquiries on Friday, but can you ask?
Sure, I wasn't aware of that.
Because I, I was given a different impression last week when I did ask about this.
I wasn't aware, thank you.
Through you, Mayor Messina, you're correct in that submissions on the budget have been received and have been a consultation process. This council's governance rules allow people to come to council meetings and make submissions on items listed on the agenda. And so, any member of the gallery can certainly make a submission on any item on this agenda by coming forward at the appropriate time and doing that. So, certainly within.
I wasn't aware that there was somebody that wanted to make a submission.
So, at what stage will, will the gallery be asked that?
I, I, yeah. I'm happy to cease the questions to the officers. And I'm asking, are there any members of the gallery that wish to make a submission this evening? I wasn't aware that there were. We have two, thank you. You can stay there tonight.
Thank you, thank you Mayor Messina. My apologies, I didn't understand the process either, otherwise I would have spoken after the questions.
Thank you, Mr Goldsworth. I actually wasn't aware that there were two members of the gallery that wanted to make submissions. So, I apologise for not asking that question, I wasn't advised. But please go ahead.
Very good, I, I did put it online. But look, what I would like to speak to is something that really concerns me and it'd be really remiss of me not to speak on, and I'll be very brief. I'm not sure what led to the 3pm time share proposal in the hours before last month's meeting, but a small change in words has had a profound change in outcome. This change, Messina, is aware of sharing the space, a way of sharing the space, a way of making everyone happy and providing a win-win for all. The truth of the matter is, the last-minute change was in fact a way of avoiding the real decision. Adding in 3pm was a mistake. We need council to recognise this error and make the tough decision.
Mr Goldsworth, sorry, I, I need to, and I know what you have to say is important, but please forgive me, it's actually not in relation to the budget submission. So, it's a submission to council in general rather than in relation to this budget, adoption of budget. Can I just confirm that with governance if I'm correct in stating that?
Mayor Messina, I believe you mentioned this will be returned into council at a later date. I'm more than happy to read this at a later date if that's more convenient.
Is it in relation, is your submission, the submissions tonight are about the adoption of this budget? So, submissions in relation to the budget? And I don't think yours does, but I'm happy if.
I, I thought that there was, the golf course was included in the budget, but maybe I'm mistaken, I didn't read the whole document.
Through you, Mayor Messina, the budget is listed on the, on the agenda and I think if you follow that logic, we would have a submission on anything because the budget covers everything the council does. I think it's appropriate that you come back at it when the Northkot Golf Course matter is represented to council and they make a further decision to make your submission. That would be my view, Adam, Mayor.
Thank you, I'm, I'm pleased to hear your submission and, yeah. Perhaps if you could want to send that through to council beforehand, councillors individually, and then do your submission also on the night when it comes back into the chamber.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mr Goldsworth.
Wonderful evening.
Welcome, we could state your name and your suburb, thank you.
Louise Kenny Shen, Reservoir. So, my submission relates to the budget, in particular to the Reservoir Leisure Centre and the decision by council to not include the 50-metre pool in that redevelopment. Firstly, I commend council for recognising the need for more services for hydrotherapy and learn to swim because those improvements are a great start. However, the plan falls short in not providing for a 50-metre pool at the centre. RLC services a huge area with people from Preston, Reservoir, Bundura having it as their closest public leisure centre. Without a 50-metre pool, many local schools are opting to spend their money outside of Darabin and set, take Darabin kids elsewhere to swim. Darabin has put significantly larger spend into NARC for a full rebuild, which is needed just as much as it is at RLC. Projections of kinder places in Northkot, however, are half that of Reservoir over the next five years. If the need is for Northkot, clearly it's needed in Reservoir. If council is wanting to spend the budget in a future-proofing manner with mind to projections for population growth and demographic changes, there needs to be sufficient funding into the services that our children will use as they go and play in the north of Darabin. The most upsetting part of this decision, however, is what seems to have been the justification for it used by the Darabin City Council. I'm sure many of you are aware there is a petition circulating in the local community which decries the use of migrant and disadvantaged communities as an excuse to not provide the 50-metre pool. And this petition, as of this afternoon, has gathered over 1,000 signatures. I would appreciate advice on how to get that tabled at a council meeting in a future meeting, but that's beside the point. It's the council's explanation that there are, as there are many new migrants in Reservoir, that there are new migrants, I'm sorry, and that new migrants are at a heightened risk of drowning, there is no need for the 50-metre pool. East Reservoir does have the highest concentration of culturally diverse residents in Darabin, but by no means is it close to a majority of the population of the area. And that's by the by because the pool services more than the five or six adjacent streets anyway. To take this route of stereotyping already vulnerable communities to justify the denial of a service is reprehensible to say the least. It has put a scapegoat and a target on the backs of migrants and lower socio-economic residents in the community. Look at the types of new migrants moving in, young families. Water play and swimming are such important parts of growing up in Australia and the children of these new families deserve to have access to equitable services near their homes as children in other high migrant populated areas like Pasco Vale, Forest Hill, Oakley and Dandenong Hav. 25 metres just isn't going to cut it. And the use of migrants and lower socio-economic community members to justify this is a poor decision and I would urge councillors to consider that.
Thank you, Louise, and it's great to see you again, thank you. Are there any further submissions? No, there aren't, okay. So, we've heard a question to the officers from councillor Dimitri Artis. Councillor Williams wanted to hear from submissions from the audience and from members of the galleries and we've done so. Councillor Williams, do you have a question? No.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, are there any further questions? There are none. Councillors, do I have a motion? Saw councillor Lawrence's hand up first. Councillor Lawrence, was you, can I confirm your hand was up?
Yes, I just wanted to move the motion with a small amendment.
On which item number? So, item number, so we're looking at item number 8.3. And then there's going to be an amendment. So, what we're going to do, we're going to go through, going straight to the amendments and then we're going to be voting on the separate items later on. So, councillor.
Mayor Messina, I have to apologise, but neither the hub document I have or the online document I have in my other computer or the hard copy I have here have the actual motion.
But my understanding is, it's on the, I, I just want to confirm councillor Lawrence because you did circulate and I want to thank you for circulating that earlier. Would it be the one that's on the, on the item now, on the board now?
I'm just flagging, I haven't seen the budget. So, I'm not sure where things insert. Because on three devices and hard copy, the budget's missing.
Okay, can I ask that, we have an officer, please contact councillor Lawrence tomorrow or the next couple of days to ensure that his IT is able to be, able to be read, that big, big tin can hub and all his devices?
It's just the document there is also missing the budget.
I just want to make sure that in future, that you have the assistance that you need.
So, I will just read this out as an amendment.
Thank you.
And hopefully it fits within this, it's just a small amendment. There's, the council includes broad community consultation on the need for a 50-metre pool as part of the planning and design work for the Reservoir Leisure Centre redevelopment that is included in the capital works budget for 2022-23 as outlined on page 75 of Appendix A of the Adoption of Budget 2022-23 Report.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. Before, I asked for a second of this amendment by councillor Lawrence. I'd like to seek some governance advice because this, this item has been debated in the chamber privately, previously. And I'd like to seek some governance advice, please.
Certainly, Mayor Messina. As I understand it, councillor Lawrence has moved the officer recommendation just across various pages with an additional point as shown on the, on the screen here. Mayor Messina, council's governance rules require you not to accept any motion whether lapsed or moved or that is similar intent to a, to a motion that's been moved briefly and lost. And in the minutes of the April meeting, this issue of the design options with regard to the option of a 50-metre pool was moved by councillors and seconded and debated and lost. So, unless there is the consent of the majority of councillors here, this additional point that councillor Lawrence has raised should not be accepted by yourself. But, so you'll need to put it to a procedural vote to see whether the majority of council wish to have that debate again.
Thank you, Mr Mann. I understand that we've debated this beforehand.
I'm happy to move that procedural motion.
Do I have a second for the, I was going to make a statement before you state that. I'm, we've just, we've debated this over a numerous amount of times in this particular chamber. Given that you circulated your amendment prior and you're seeking, you're seeking to move a procedural motion, I'm looking for a second of the procedural motion that's been moved by councillor Lawrence, seconded by councillor Williams. All those in favour of the procedural motion to install, to, to provide this as an amendment for this council to debate?
Can I speak to the procedural?
Can you, yes, you've moved the procedural motion. I've asked for a mover, which is yourself, and a second of councillor Williams. Now, I'm going to ask that to put that to the vote.
Can I speak to the rationale?
No, it's just a procedural motion first, not speaking to the procedural motion. So, there's all those in favour of the procedural motion. That's moved, that's been supported by councillor Williams, councillor Dimitri Artis, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence, all those against, that's councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton and myself. That procedural motion is not carried, so therefore we will not be debating this particular amendment. Do we?
I'm withdrawing my moving of this motion.
Thank you.
Especially when the previous motion said that a variety of sides.
Especially when the previous motion said that a variety of sizes would be considered, and yourself and the deputy mayor made suggestions to me of supporting a 50 metre pool.
Do we have a, do we have a motion? Councillor Rennie.
Mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation in the papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second? A second by councillor McCarthy, do you have, would you like to speak to your motion?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. This is a very significant motion, and councillors will be aware that it covers a number of different areas of council work. One is the declaration of the special wage charge for the Reservoir Business District. The next is the declaration of the curbside waste service charge and public waste service rate and associated concessions. It then covers the declaration of the pensioner rebate and concessions for properties owned and managed by Aboriginal Housing Victoria. And this is a particularly fantastic part of the motion that I'd like to draw people's attention to tonight, and has been subject of a previous briefing. I think it is a really important step that this council is taking towards justice for First Nations communities, that we have determined that it would be appropriate to waive the rates on all properties owned by Aboriginal Housing Victoria. It seems to me only fair that if we say this is Aboriginal land, we shouldn't be charging Aboriginal organisations rates to have housing on this land that was never ceded. And I think that is a really important step forward, and I hope that it holds the beginning of movement right across Victoria that sees other councils do similarly. Other aspects that we're adopting tonight include the adoption of the Budget Revenue and Rating Plan and Rates Financial Hardship Policy. And councillors, you would all be aware that we have spent many, many hours talking about the approach and equity lens over the work that we do, and how to make sure that some of our community members who have fewer access to resources are protected from some of the ups and downs that will occur as a result of the introduction of a separate waste charge. I'm in favour of this, because whilst it creates some people who will pay more and some people who will pay less, I think inherently there are significant inequities in the system now, where people who live in apartments, who are at the lower end of the property scale in Darabin are effectively paying twice for waste removal, once through private contractors and once through a council rates charge, and this will actually rectify that. There's no doubt it's been a complex matter, and I think when we adopt this budget tonight, and this new way of rating the waste charges, we will be coming into line with about 85% of councils around Victoria, with the remaining 15% of councils not far behind. I would like just to use my last 20 seconds or so to thank the staff from the finance team who have worked hours and hours over weeks and months to put together a very complex budget with very constrained resources. They've gone over and above, and I really want to recommend, commend their work and recommend this budget to everyone.
Yeah, councillor Rennie. As for McCarthy-
I'll reserve my right for the moment.
Councillor Demetriatus.
Mayor, I have an amendment. I circulated it earlier.
Sorry, playing around with the IT here, and I think it's a, okay. Is this your amendment, councillor Demetriatus?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Do we have a second up? That's seconded by councillor Williams. Do we have any questions to officers in relation to this amendment? May I please then ask the CEO to address?
If I may, councillors, just to advise you that the, the impact of this amendment is, is an additional cost impact to the budget of in excess of $625,000 is our initial estimation based on the time we've had today. Another thing, just to acknowledge, is that in terms of the application for grants, there are limitations. We can only apply for one grant for planning matters, and two for, I'm sorry, apologies, two for planning matters and one for building matters, which are shovel-ready projects, just to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Mayor. My motion, my amendment is about all grants in general, including the one that's, that closes on the 12th of July, so it's not about just the one grant.
Thank you. Before we go any further, can I just seek some governance advice into item number G based on what occurred just on the previous amendment, in terms of the construction of a 50 metre pool at Reservoir Leisure Centre, given that it didn't meet, had any issues in relation to governance that had been debated in this particular chamber prior?
Can I just ask, Mayor, I believe this is about grants, and that it includes those projects, but it's not limited to, so it's not specifically about one-
Thank you for your intention, I just wanted to confirm, because my understanding is that council has to agree to build the pool, rather than the grants being, you have to agree to build something for the grant to be applied for. I just need some governance advice on that, because my understanding that is correct. Well, I'll seek some governance advice, thank you. For an officer, perhaps? Ms Watson, do I get that over to, rather than governance in relation to that? In relation to the process of the grants, how that is obtainable, and does it have to go through planning and then construction? And is there an issue in relation to governance, given that item number G relates to an item that's been debated and not been allowed in this, and hasn't, has not been carried by this particular council? And also, it was not submitted based on a procedural motion just a few minutes ago? So there's three issues there.
If I might have a, have a go with you, Mayor Messina, in terms of the, the way we should normally do things, typically we would rely on a decision of council to then have the delegation to then proceed to implement that action. One of the challenges with this would certainly be a tension around direction to apply for a grant for the construction of a pool which council has not yet confirmed or given the direction to construct. That would be difficult for officers, I think, not having resolved that. That's not to say it couldn't happen in time as that decision-making process progresses, but that would be my initial response. I would happily have Stephen Mann contribute further if you'd like to.
No, it's fine.
And the budget implications that are not already in the budget, some of these items are not already in the budget, how does that affect this current budget, how we move forward?
Three year, Mayor Messina, in terms of the different grant mechanisms, and a lot of them do require match funding, and what that means is that we need to have the same amount in the bu, money, same amount of money in the budget that we are seeking the grant for, so in those types of grant situations, like the, like the ones upcoming on the 12th of July, that would require us to have money in the budget in order to make that submission, or alternatively, should we be successful, you know, to be honest, in terms of the application process, there would be an expectation, we would demonstrate that we had the budget available to secure that grant. We would need to stop doing something else to create space, should we be successful with a grant, or should we proceed down a grant application?
And my question is, given that the budget is a monetary value, this could be $625,000 in terms of the expenditure based on the amendment, we would need to remove $625,000 from the budget, is that correct?
I, I think it's very difficult to say. What I could, as a worst-case scenario, if we, if they were all match funding grant applications, which I presume they would not all be, but we haven't investigated that, if they were all match funding, we'd be looking at $625,000 as a minimum of what we'd need to find within the budget as it is tonight. Should they not be match funding, that would be a different story, but understanding from the typical grants that are available is the majority of them require match funding.
Thank you.
Would that be fair to say, Shadi?
My next question, just for the members of the gallery and also for council laws, my understanding is that it's not called female-friendly facilities anymore, it's gender-neutral facilities, is that correct? And if so, do we have, do we have anything in the budget that allows to address female-friendly or gender-neutral facilities as an umbrella rather than specific items?
We'll call on Shadi Hannah, General Manager of Community, thank you, Shadi.
Thank you, Mayor. So there is $200,000 in the budget allocated for gender-inclusive change facilities.
Thank you, that's gender-inclusive, thank you very much for that. And that's for the design?
It, it will, you know, something we're going to explore, there is a project, an afforded plan that would require design and that we can utilise that, that's exactly right here.
Thank you, Shadi. Councillor Demetriatus.
Just in regard to the $200,000, how many projects would be, would we be able to design for?
So if we were to, the project that we are looking at designing, in terms of female-friendly specific, and it is a pavilion, then it would be, it would, the $200,000 would consume, that would be consumed by one project only.
For a pavilion?
Yep. Well, yes, female, gender-inclusive change rooms within a pavilion, that's correct, yeah.
Thank you. Do we have a second for councillor Demetri, oh no, sorry, apologies, it was moved by councillor Demetriatus, and I think it was seconded by councillor Williams. Councillor Demetriatus, would you like to speak to your amendment? Oh, sorry, I need to know if it was acceptable to the mover in the second up, not acceptable. Councillor Demetriatus.
Many local sporting clubs have lodged submissions to Darabin Council, raising concerns about the ongoing lack of investment and maintenance of community sporting facilities by Darabin Council, yet these needs have not been met by this budget. Furthermore, council in the past and more recently, has not been willing to apply for the state government grants for many of these projects that are listed, despite the many sporting club requests for upgrades to their facilities. Local members of parliament have expressed support for Darabin Council to apply for federal and state government grants, in order to support local sporting clubs and sporting infrastructure. I remind councillors that federal and state sporting infrastructure grants are the primary avenue through which council can access federal and sporting funds for local sporting facility upgrades. If council does not apply for federal and sporting government grants, it is putting the municipality at a disadvantage by effectively opting out of significant funding opportunities. Therefore, this amendment allows council to apply for federal and state government grants, not one in particular, in order to grow community sport through improved council facilities for projects, not limited to those listed in my amendment, such as a 50 metre reservoir, pool at Reservoir Leisure Centre, and gender-neutral facilities at Northkot tennis clubs, which I remind everyone again, still has only one portalo. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Williams.
I reserve my right.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence.
Yes, Mayor Messina, yes, I'd raise to speak in favour of this amendment, and I note that we still haven't voted on the budget, and it's still a democracy. And I also note that we have a number of challenges created by your support of the 3pm curfew, that means that we could be spending over a million dollars on a bankrupting Northkot Golf Course. So this budget is really not set in stone at the moment, and I would also note, $650,000 has been allocated to the Northgood Golf Course project, which has basically queue-jumped over a whole range of projects across the city. So I'd just note the poor governance in all that. Now, given that queue-jumping's becoming a thing, I'm happy to support some of these things. Obviously, when we get to actually applying, there'll be some officer advice and these things will be whittled down. But I will also note, notwithstanding the linguistics that I've heard tonight, that a compromise amendment to the previous motion, written by councillor Trent McCarthy, guaranteed the community that a variety of sizes would be considered in the Reservoir Leisure Centre. And I would just caution you, that many people in our community actually understand English.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hannan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sadly not able to support this motion, as much as I would love to see funding for all of those projects listed there, and many others that missed out on the budget this time, for this, this year. Unfortunately, it's the nature of the world we live in, and particularly in Darabin Council, we've got many wonderful sporting and other clubs, who we, who we would love to see go further and further in terms of their successes and support them. Unfortunately, it's just not possible to do it every year for every club. There's a number of problems with this particular amendment. Firstly, it's not necessary, we know that council management have been very successful in the past in applying for, for grants for this kind of funding. I have no doubt that they will continue to do so, based on the list of priorities that have been set collectively by this council. That they don't need, council management do not need a resolution from us as councillors, that is an operational decision taken by management, and I have great faith in that they will continue their success in applying for these kind of grants. There's some serious financial issues here, if we actually follow it, it's actually not possible. The way it's written is to apply for seven things for 2022 local sport infrastructure fund and beyond. We know that's just not even possible, according to the eligibility criteria for that, for that particular funding round. It will create a hole in the budget, which is, we don't know where, where that money's going to come from.
10 seconds.
It's not good governance in terms of picking and choosing at the last minute particular projects, as much as we'd like to. We need to focus on setting long-term, sorry, long-term priorities for the future, for the whole of the council, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I will be supporting this amendment, and I'll be supporting it mainly for one particular item that's on that list, and that's the last item there about the 50, 50 metre pool. I appreciate and understand that there may be some technical difficulties about how many grants we can apply for, but I would make the appeal that if we were to apply for grants, and this would be successful, is that we would apply for the 50 metre pool for the Reservoir Leisure Centre. We've heard tonight some very passionate speeches in relation to this important project, and it has intergenerational significance. I can't stress the importance of what that would mean for one of the biggest suburbs in Melbourne, which is the suburb of Reservoir. And I think that we should put our best foot forward, and in relation to put in a submission in regards to this important, what would be an important and significant infrastructure development, or out of our city, which has socio-economic disadvantage. I just can't understand or fathom why there is resistance in relation to this particular project, and why there is resistance in order to explore with government sources, particularly now that we have, where the political climate has changed, and where there is more attention being placed in relation to ensuring we bring all the community together. And, and that's why I'm supporting this motion, and I'm supporting this motion, to sum up, dominantly, because I think it's critical that we reflect long and hard on supporting a 50 metre redevelopment pool for the Reservoir Leisure Centre.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Williams.
Thank you. In many cases, such grants are only successful when a project is either shovel-ready, or when a project is completed at the design stage. Therefore, council has been reluctant in applying for grants from state and federal government. In many cases, the grant will only give a proportion amount of dollars, or 50% of the project. Therefore, council will have to foot the bill. However, council has been missing out on funding and opportunities that could possibly financially benefit the Darabin budget and projects that we all have futures that we would like to start fulfilling. What this amendment does is to ensure that we apply for as many grants wherever possible. Understandably, in most cases, council will need to work on agreeing with projects that will benefit the community to start the design phase. We need to start planning and designing for the future and growing population of Darabin.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Demetriatus, write a reply.
Mayor, I don't believe you write a reply on amendments.
Before I put this to the vote, I'd like to make a statement. First and foremost, if a councillor does not want to see our municipality filled with female-friendly facilities, and a vote for or against this does not signify that at all, grants are applied for and either approved by the, like, by the government at that time, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to have that approved by the government at the time. We apply for grants for the reservoir, from my understanding, for the Northgood Aquatic Centre, which is a $65 million project, and we've been given a $10 million no-interest loan. We have not been given any funding for that particular aquatic- We have not been given any funding for that particular aquatic centre. Do I want to see female-friendly facilities at Northcote Football Club? Absolutely. Do I also want to see female facilities support at the Keown Parks Football Club? I know Keown Park's been asking for many years for that. Do I want to see a clubhouse upgrade at Northcote Golf Course? Yes. Are there areas of the municipality that need female-friendly infrastructure? Absolutely. But $625,000 is what roughly approximately this is worth. In terms of monetary value, we also have to have the staff and the resources to build it. Do I want this? Do I want to wave a magic wand and have every sporting club in Darabben with a new, brand-new facility? Absolutely. But we do not have the financial resources nor the borrowing power to do that. So I'd like to put this amendment to the vote. All those in favour of this particular amendment? That's councillor Williams, councillor Demetriatus, councillor Greco and councillor Lawrence. All those against councillor Hannon, councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie, councillor Newton, councillor Messina. Did I want to have the whole municipality? Yes, but we can't. Councillors, now we go back to the motion that was moved by councillor Rennie and seconded by councillor McCarthy. We heard from councillor Lawrence and councillor... sorry, we heard... no, we didn't. We heard from councillor Rennie who moved and councillor McCarthy reserved his right. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Demetriatus?
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting Darabben's 2022-23 budget for a number of important reasons. This budget is unfair. With the introduction of the waste charge and with most service costs also increasing in the budget, the most vulnerable in our community will suffer the most and they're the ones that need the most assistance. I am particularly concerned about the introduction of Darabben's waste charge, especially that it didn't go to community consultation. If Darabben had followed proper process and consulted the wider public, I would have been more supportive of the outcome. However, consultation did not occur. And instead, council again forcefully imposed their opinions on the community without taking them on a journey. What also concerns me about ramming through this waste charge is it is uncapped. It decreases rates for big businesses such as McDonald's, KFC and other big polluters, as well as global gas companies and even gambling venues, despite council's strong stance on climate emergency and electric gaming vehicles, machines. Sounds quite hypocritical to me. I am in disbelief that some councillors are supporting this waste charge that rewards organisations who do not uphold the social justice principles that we have been fighting for for years. Furthermore, this council claims to be progressive. We say we support gender equality as well as disability access. However, based on this budget in front of us, I seriously question that narrative. Currently, the Northcote Tennis Club, for instance, and I repeat, has only one portalo. And sporting clubs such as Pitcher Park are left without appropriate disability access. While I believe it is good that we managed to find a small amount of $200,000 to invest in gender neutral facilities, this is not enough because the funding only allows for the design of one pavilion, as we heard from officers. What about the other clubs? Council has been pushing sporting clubs to increase female participation for years. But how can we do that without having the facilities for females? I'm really disappointed with this budget.
Thank you, councillor Demetriatus. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak in favour of the motion and the budget as a whole and echo councillor Rennie's commendation of all the huge amount of work that has gone into this on behalf of all the staff. So thank you. I wanted to point out, in terms of financial, the financial side of things, we've really pushed this budget to the limit because we're ambitious in our collective vision of what we can achieve for Darabben. There is a small surplus, which is appropriate. But it's moderate and it's required in order to meet current and future commitments. I'm not sure I'm getting a... just advise them over there. I... In terms of borrowings that have been referred to, it's within the Victoria Auditor General Office Financial Sustainability Ratios. So again, it's ambitious, but it's financially appropriate. There is a large focus on fairness and equity in this budget across the whole budget, every area of the budget. Particularly progressive measures I'd like to point out in implementing community design projects to improve health and wellbeing in East Preston and East Reservoir, four-year volunteering programme to increase connectedness of diverse communities, expanding funded three-year-old community... sorry, three-year-old kindergarten programme, continuing assertive outreach programmes to support people sleeping rough and experiencing homelessness. They're the targeted ones. It's an example of where council uses our rates to really focus on addressing disadvantage, as well as a range of capital works, climate actions, advocacy work that will benefit all residents. So I commend it to council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannon. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Lawrence?
Mayor Messina, could I just get some advice? We're going to vote on the garbage tax, aren't we?
Can you please rephrase that? It's not as it is in the agenda. It doesn't say garbage tax. So can you please rephrase that?
The waste charge, the garbage tax?
Yeah, we were talking about the adoption of this... I will go for the vote based on what I indicated earlier. Recommendation 1 to 2, 6 to 7, 3 to 5, 8 to 19, 10 to 15 and then 16.
Yes, the officer's just given me that. I'm just trying to follow. If I speak to this, can I...
You can speak to this and then you can vote for the other items, yes.
Then I can't speak to the waste charge later on, so this is... okay.
You get to speak once.
Thank you.
Would you like to exercise that right?
Yes, I'd like to speak against the motion, substantive motion. And because of the things I outlined before, that this council came together and mapped out a council plan and that was to build a more inclusive community for all. And that was also to support vulnerable members of our community. Now, the structure of this budget deals with potentially two 10-year demands. One is the $15 million reduction in commercial rates that we're choosing to implement. And the other is the $26 million extra cost in terms of waste, given the challenges of the change that we're talking about in terms of full bins and growing needs there. So the restructure of this budget is actually taking and putting a burden on many people who are asset-rich and income-poor. Further, the actual asset thresholds don't make any sense because they reward rich investors with small properties and then people with $1.7 million houses, with not having the burden, not contributing to the effort, the biggest effort we can do in terms of climate change. Now, this is pretty much the opposite of what I've spent 30 years of my life pursuing, which is in Australia, where we have corporations that do not pay their way. We have argued for climate, mining tax, carbon taxes, and we have prosecuted that, I say we, the progressive side of politics, to try to get those who profit from polluting to contribute to the change we need. The change we need is a better waste system. So the problem with this budget, it is punishing the very people that our council plan said we were going to support.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'll be brief.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. First of all...
Councillor Greco, sorry, councillor Newton, I didn't even see your hand up. My sincerest apologies. You'll be next, councillor Greco.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor Messina. I just wanted to be brief and talk about one thing. We've got green bins for thousands of people being rolled across the municipality at the moment. I know some have received them and some are yet to receive them, but this is going to make a huge difference to our community. And one of the things that's really incredible about this budget is that it includes the rollout of the Universal Food Organic and Garden Organic Waste Collection. I think it's worth mentioning that each year council collects 6,000, 6,100,000 bins and we collect 21,000 tonnes of green waste. So this will make a huge difference to the emissions that we have in Darabben and I think this is something to be really proud of. So I hope that everyone enjoys their green bins. Mayor Messina's made a fantastic video about exactly how to use it. So I think there's a whole lot of positive things in this budget and I think the Universal FOGO Service is a real highlight. So I commend this budget to you.
Thank you. Councillor Greco, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Look, I will be voting against certain aspects of the resolution and I just want to make this short speech. First, I'd like to thank the officers for the work that they've done and also the community for their submissions and also some of the presentations that we heard tonight. There are some good things in the budget, undoubtedly, and aged care, the installation of 300 solar systems, et cetera. But this budget, for me, and I've thought long and hard about this and I've been advocating within council, is that there's a huge threshold question in relation to this budget. That threshold question is in regards to the rate charge, which is a regressive form of taxation that has been imposed for the first time here on this council. What that does is that it makes the budget structurally inequitable. We've talked a lot about equity, but by definition, what we are doing is making the budget structurally inequitable. And the current system that we have is actually a fairer system. It's a more proportional system. I don't buy the argument that because all other councils have got a waste charge that we should have one. That does not necessarily make it right. The thing that distinguished Darabben Council was its sense of equity and its sense of proportionality. What we're doing is therefore, the majority of rate payers will actually be paying more, up to $100 or $157 more, and which means, as councillor Demetriatus said, biggest polluters... This is the irony, councillors. The biggest polluters, the Harvey Norman's, your supermarkets, your multinationals, your KFCs, your McDonald's, they will receive a massive, massive rate reduction as a result of this introduction of the waste charge. And I think we have to be cognizant of that, councillors. And that's why I fundamentally oppose this regressive form of taxation that we are imposing and structurally embedding in our... And the final point that I make is that, notwithstanding the concessions, the concessions that we've put in place, the equity concessions, are only for one year, councillors. If you read the detail, it is only for one year. One little line in the thousands of words, only for one year. Thank you. And I apologise for being over time.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Williams, yes?
We currently have over 25,000 people living with a disability in Darabben. Residents living with a disability and those who hold a concession card deserves to be treated equally and to ensure that they are not financially worst off. How is this consistent with the equal policy... sorry, equity policy and for the people of capacity to pay? They must and should not be disadvantaged. The greatest number of elderly pensioners also receiving home help and those with a disability are residents living in the north of Darabben. Certainly, this is a no-brainer that they are our most vulnerable and the least likely to speak up. The biggest winners from this waste charge will no doubtably be the Preston Market, Northcote Plaza, Northland Shopping Centre and retail stores like Harvey Norman and Bunnings that have received massive profits during the many lockdowns. It seems that we are pushing pensioners and residents rate payers when commercial businesses are rewarded a 10% discount and no mutual obligation to reduce waste. I cannot vote for this budget as it does not reflect other budgets that I have actually voted for. I did not vote for the draft budget. This budget fails to show the breakdown dollar amounts on large projects. As an example, there's 500Ks for the design of the Reservoir Leisure Centre. But sadly, there's no dollar amount allocated to do further consultation on the Reservoir Leisure Centre that properly brings the community along that journey. The budget demisses doing proper consultation and yet council has successfully done extensive consultation for NARC and the Northcote Golf Course. This council has thrown out and completely ignored the community and for what has been put money in areas of real needs that has been flushed rate payer's money down the toilet. It is that the Northcote Golf Court has been escalated up the list of proper...
It's time. Thank you, councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll exercise my rights as the secondary in speaking to this and thank councillors for all their comments, as diverse as they are. I would appeal to all councillors to please consider their positions and do get behind this budget. And I'd like to also, of course, thank the officers for their extraordinary work in bringing this to us under what are very difficult circumstances for all local governments with the financial pressures that exist. And it's an extraordinary effort that we see here tonight to have a budget which brings together a response to council's plan, of course, the annual plan as well, and some significant capital works activity, as councillors would be aware. I just wish to highlight, and I'm sorry in saying that, I'd also like to thank all the submitters that took the time to submit to us. And were they not successful this evening, I would encourage them to continue to engage with council regarding their projects and preferences because we often see that these projects, it's about timing and sometimes it's about pacing and sometimes it's about alignment to council strategy. But I'd just like to highlight a couple of things. One, of course, is council will continue to develop its partnership with the Rangdari Wurun Cultural Heritage Aboriginal Corporation to continue to develop our mutual goals. And I'm really proud of that work alongside our commitment to Aboriginal Housing Victoria, which councillor Rennie made reference to earlier. This is a budget that invests in relationships, in partnerships and in our community. We also, as councillors would be aware, are going to make a significant impact on our natural environment. We will be investing in planting 10,000 indigenous aquatic and riparian plants at Edgar's Creek on council-owned land. We'll also be developing a new climate emergency plan. And I would like to acknowledge, as you did, Mayor, earlier, Philip Sutton and his work in inspiring us to keep going on climate emergency. And I think that our new plan, which is funded through this budget, masterised the challenge that Philip set out for us. Finally, Mayor, I'd like to thank all councillors and officers for their involvement in the process. I commend the budget and I urge councillors to vote for it.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. I will briefly exercise my right of reply. I feel it's a great shame that anyone listening to the debate tonight might think that there were fundamental kind of disagreements about the bulk of the spending we're talking about tonight. In fact, I put it to everyone that 95% of what's in this budget is agreed on and there is significant consensus around the investment that we're making in our community. And I wouldn't want the debate to overshadow that fact that we know through this budget that we will be employing maternal and child health nurses, we will be resurfacing roads, we will be rewilding parks and we will be picking up waste. And every one of us agrees with the delivery of those services and agrees with the spending that is in the budget. And that is true for the vast majority of what is in front of us. There are, of course, a few things in the budget that I would prefer weren't there. There are a few areas where they weren't my priorities and they've made it in any way. There are a few areas where there's things I would have liked to see being invested and they didn't get in this year. That doesn't mean they won't get in in a subsequent year and it doesn't mean they're not important. I'll follow councillor McCarthy in thanking all those who made submissions and note that those submissions, even if they didn't result in changes this year, actually do influence our thinking in future years and influence the way we think about prioritising different things. And the additional investment we've made in all gender change facilities is an example of that. I think it's also really worth noting there's some things that have been said about giving businesses a free kick. In fact, businesses pay a loading on their rates of 1.75, which means that where a resident in a million-dollar property might pay $2,000 in rates, a business, a small business in a property worth the same amount would pay approximately $3,500. That's a very significant rate loading for a small business and they will actually be beneficiaries of some of the changes we're making. So my colleagues, I commend the budget to you. If you can't vote for the whole thing, please look at those components that you can vote for.
Thank you. Before I put those other items to the vote, I would like to exercise my right to speak as well. There's a number of discussions tonight and one was around gender female inclusivity. We also discussed waste and design. And we also discussed a few things that I were very passionate about. First and foremost, the Global Learning Hub. That is something that I gave up for this particular budget so that we could design gender female facilities and have the design up there on the town. facilities and have the design up there on the table. That is something that I gave up in this budget so we can address that with the community. The fact that we haven't individually allocated who's going to get that grant or who's going to get that funding for the design, does that not mean that it's not happening? The other thing also is, is waste is a design fault. We need mandatory legislation from the federal government to address the waste circular economy. I want to commend Lily Deambarsio and her circular economy here in Victoria, but we need mandatory design change because that's how you fix up waste in this economic climate, not only here in Australia, but that's how they're doing it overseas. And Australia is antiquated and very far behind. Secondly, gender inclusive, I've mentioned that. There's so much more, but there's something that I'm deeply, another project that I'm deeply passionate about and it's been left behind by many council terms, and that's the reservoir boathouse. I look forward to sitting there by the lake and sitting down and having a latte overlooking that boathouse, overlooking the lake, because that's been much neglected prior. So I look forward to the facilitation of that process. And also, in addition to that, the Darabben Chamber of Commerce, which sadly we need for our business community. The other thing that I look forward to, and that's not being mentioned, is that this council provided $12 million during the pandemic to our community. $12 million, yes, that we could have spent on sporting infrastructure, but we gave it out to those needing in our community. So I want to commend all the officers for their dedication in this particular report. So I just wanted to make those comments because I think those comments needed to be made. And before we go there, I would like to address the items one by one for voting this evening. Councillors, the first one we're going to vote on is recommendation one and two, and I'll read them out. Sorry, I'll get it. Oh, I can't see it on the screen, sorry. I've got it, I'll just get it. On this report, oh, it's the wrong report. It's the wrong report. Sorry, it's not on here. Sorry, I've got the wrong report. Okay, councillors, we're voting for item number one, notes of summary, submissions received prepared on behalf of the Hearing of Submissions Committee Appendix D. Item number two, advisers or submitters that council has considered their submissions relating to the draft budget 2022-23, incorporating the four-year budget and that the submitters be advised of the outcome of the considerations relates to this specific submissions and thank them for their contribution. So all those in favour of those items? That's been carried unanimously. The next item is the declaration of the special rate for Reservoir Business District. All those in favour of that particular item? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. Item declaration of curbside waste service charge and public waste service rate and associated concessions. All those in favour? That's been supported by councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Renney and councillor Newson. All those against? Councillor Williams, councillor Demetriades, councillor Lawrence and councillor Greco. Declaration of penalty rebate and concession for properties owned and managed by Aboriginal Housing Victoria. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors, that's carried unanimously. Adoption of Budget Revenue Rating Plan rates financial hardship policies. All those in favour? That's been supported by councillor Hannan, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Newson, councillor Renney. All those against? Councillor Demetriades and councillor Lawrence. Councillor Greco, you're abstaining? Thank you. And now we go to item number 15. So we're voting for the rest of the items, number 16, on to item 25. All those in favour of the adoption of the budget? That's councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Renney, councillor Newson, councillor Messina. All those against? Councillor Williams, councillor Demetriades and councillor Lawrence and councillor Greco. That's-
Member Seena, I just asked the previous vote, where I abstained. What was that in relation to?
You abstained?
The hardship policy.
The hardship policy, which was item number 10 to 15.
I thought you were talking about from 10 to-
Yeah, 10 to 15.
I would be, my intent was to vote in favour of the hardship policy.
Yes, me too, sorry.
Okay, so can we-
Just that I got confused in the way that you presented it.
One moment, councillors. So we're going to go back to, and I'm happy to accept that, we're going to vote again for the adoption of the Budget Revenue Rating Plan rates financial hardship policy. That's item number 10, right through to item number 15. All votes?
Sorry, mayor, it says adoption of the budget, but is that the budget associated-
No, that'll be 16.
But it actually says adoption of the budget.
Revenue-
Yep, but it impacts what's in the budget for the waste-
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, sorry.
Oh, so it's adoption of the budget of the hardship policy to go into the budget?
Correct.
It's, sorry.
If I may, just to confirm, it is adoption of the budget, adoption of the Revenue Rating Plan, adoption of the hardship policy. So it's all of those elements together, the holistic elements?
Oh, so it's also, so what's 16 then? Because we didn't say it on-
16 is the endorsement of the draft budget incorporating a four-year budget to proceed to communicate-
No.
That's what it says on my one.
Essentially, the final part is to direct the CEO to communicate the outcome of tonight's decision back to the community.
Oh, so that's 16. So this is the adoption of the budget plus all those policies?
This is the last decision.
Okay. So yeah, no, I'd like to vote against this particular one then, thank you.
Okay, so I'll put that item to the vote.
Which one, sorry?
10 to 15. All those in favour? Councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy, councillor Messina, councillor Renney, councillor Newson. All those against? Councillor Demetriades, councillor Greco, councillor Lawrence and councillor Williams. That has been carried, I beg your pardon.
Can we get the wording up of 16?
Just one moment. Yeah, 15's the last bit. Okay. Because it just saws that there on there. Okay, councillors, I'm going to suggest a 10-minute break. So we come back at 8:27. At 8:29 PM. Thank you. Welcome again, councillors. The meeting is now open. The next report we have to consider is 8.3, Adoption of Asset Plan 2022-2032. Are there any questions to the officers? No questions. Councillors, can I have a motion? councillor Hannan?
I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a second, or? councillor Renney. councillor Hannan, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just bear with me one moment, I'm just getting my IT to work. Thank you. So this item is to adopt the asset plan for the next 10 years. The asset plan is a strategic and financial plan for management of council's assets. Council's responsible for almost $2 billion of community centres, sporting facilities, roads, footpaths, parks, drains, bushlands, et cetera, which of course we hold as stewards and manage for the whole of the community. It's a requirement under the Local Government Act for council to have such a plan, but going well beyond the bare requirements- It's a requirement under the Local Government Act for council to have such a plan, [S03] but going well beyond the bare requirements. It's a credit to the staff who've put this together. [S03] They've really brought it to life and picked out the key projects, principles underlying the approach and the indicators for success as a basis for community consultation, which has taken place on the based on the draft and has been fed back into this adopted plan, [S03] this plan for adoption. Keynotes are that there's a total investment of seven hundred and fifty four million dollars proposed over ten years. So this is a significant part of council's effort to maintain assets for the future to ensure that they are safe and fit for purpose. There are a number of challenges and this is why, [S03] this is the kind of the essence of why we have such a plan. It involves tough decisions which are made, [S03] you know, [S03] as part of a long term plan, [S03] but then on a year by year basis in terms of balancing the different pressures that we have in terms of aging infrastructure, population growth, [S03] climate emergency, [S03] recognition of first peoples. Of course, [S03] if we're talking about anything to do with land, [S03] there's an inherent acknowledgement that this land always was and will always will be the land of first peoples and they have an ongoing connection with that land. And I should say that we're wondering where we're on people in the case of Darabin. Equity across locations is specifically in this plan as a key consideration, as well as equity across people of different types of backgrounds and current and future generations. Improving accessibility and promoting diversity and inclusion in all our assets are all challenges and principles that we need to balance. And I think the balance is about right. [S03] If you look into the detail, [S03] it's about thirty eight percent renewal of existing assets, twenty percent growth in terms of areas that we'd like to see
In seconds.
change and about forty two percent operations and maintenance, [S03] which is just required and we really have no choice but to make sure we do that properly. It's important to ensure responsible management for today and future generations and I commend this to councillors to approve. [S03] Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hannan. [S01] Councillor Rennie?
Thank you, [S04] Mayor Messina. [S04] In many ways, [S04] I think this is one of the most exciting reports that we deal with tonight because this goes to how we maintain and look after the assets of our community, [S04] not just for now, [S04] but for the future. And, [S04] you know, [S04] at stake are close to two billion dollars' worth of assets, of which some are what you might describe as infrastructure assets and others are land. So this asset management plan is specifically about those infrastructure assets and some of them are things that our community sees and values, [S04] like the library that they walk into. And some of them are assets which probably the community is less aware of and are less visible, but actually fundamentally influence our quality of life in our communities. And there, [S04] I'm talking about things like the drains and the quality of drains. And maintaining those is vitally important and this is the plan that outlines how we will achieve that. So councillor Hannan's covered that off very well. [S04] Thank you.
Thank you councillor. [S01] Are there any further speakers? I saw councillor Lawrence and then councillor McCarthy. [S01] Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, [S05] Mayor Messina, [S05] I'd like to talk against this asset management plan. It's a very important document, [S05] something I have stressed to people to actually read and understand. Unfortunately, [S05] our financial education in terms of Australia is pretty low and this thing is quite dense for people to understand. Fundamentally, [S05] it's easy to understand, [S05] though, [S05] explained with a city growing thirty percent in Preston and Reservoir, [S05] we are almost a growth city. And so when you look at the projections of both the the resources that we're putting in towards our assets and the total expenditure, you would expect it would actually go up in line with population, especially when we've heard about deficiencies that we've got, [S05] such as the RLC that's back in the seventies. Now, [S05] what we actually see is a roller coaster and a roller coaster of total expenditure. And there was some discussion about what what assets need to be renewed, [S05] what are non-negotiables and what are negotiables. What we're seeing is one or two projects explode debt to one of the highest metro levels in two thousand and twenty three to cope with some of the big grand projects that make up the hundred and ten million dollars' worth of three projects south of the Bell Street.
Excuse me, [S06] point of order, [S06] please, [S06] Mayor. [S06] Can I just correct, [S06] make sure I understood? Did you say green projects councillor Lawrence?
Just one moment.
Did I hear that correctly?
I didn't hear that. [S01] You need to refer, [S01] you need to refer to watch governance. [S01] You have to go through your governance, [S01] so.
Oh, [S06] well, [S06] it was item ten, [S06] it's ten H, [S06] misleading first statement.
I actually didn't hear that, [S01] but I will ask councillor Lawrence for clarification.
I can happily say here, [S05] I will never say the word green for another two and a half years.
That's not what I asked councillor Lawrence.
I didn't say it in the last twenty seconds.
You weren't referring to the political aspect?
I was not referring to greens. [S05] I never described what goes on here as being green. Okay, [S05] so what?
Apologise, [S06] I withdraw it.
You've just asked me not to use the word green. [S05] I've just said I'm going to not use it for two and a half years. [S05] What more do you want?
We're playing on the word. [S01] We've debated that, [S01] just one moment. [S01] We've debated that word. [S01] I'm going to let that go, [S01] but let's.
Debating a word I didn't use?
I didn't hear it, [S01] so I'm sorry councillor Hannan, [S01] I'm not going to, [S01] yeah, [S01] I'm not going to debate it. [S01] We're going to give an extra thirty, [S01] just one more, [S01] yes, [S01] I'm going to do, [S01] I was going to do that councillor Lawrence, [S01] I was going to give you another thirty minutes, [S01] thirty seconds on the clock. [S01] So would you like to start councillor Lawrence?
This is a very serious matter, [S05] this ten year plan. [S05] People can talk about the motives of the council to want to promote a two million dollar splash pad over a ten million dollar pool, but the reality is this means that you can't get the eight million dollars to achieve those things. And those debates about migrants and all that are irrelevant. [S05] This is the facts. This is the guidelines of what we can do in the future, [S05] not just us, [S05] but a future council. And the issue is that we've put all our borrowing power at the at the beginning of this ten year cycle and then we drop away. And that's why the totals of expenditure will not meet the needs of a basic growth in people. I would, [S05] I would say to people, [S05] if you look at the city of how much crowding we're going to get with all the multi-units, our total expenditure should be going up on assets, [S05] not on this roller coaster that's come from this peak, which seem to be all based around two thousand and twenty two, [S05] two thousand and twenty three. So this is not a balanced plan to meet population growth. And the issue there is that this plan will basically shackle the next council into failure and failing to deliver to our growing population.
Thank you councillor Lawrence. [S01] Are there any further speakers? [S01] Councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, [S07]Mayor. [S07] I'd like to thank our officers for the extraordinary work that's gone into this plan, which is forward thinking and I think quite assertive in terms of what is actually important here. As councillors would have noted in the the actual asset management plan and the report there, there is specific reference to the response of respondents with about ninety one percent of our respondents rating the impact of future climate impacts on our assets as as very, [S07] very important, [S07] very highly important to our consideration of how we manage our assets. And I want to make that reference because when we actually talk about what our assets are, you can see clearly why people are concerned about the importance of us continuing to invest in our assets, our almost one point two billion dollars' worth of assets that we have in the city of Darabin, which are within the city of Darabin's responsibility. So very quickly, [S07] we are talking about the three hundred and thirty three buildings, including the two aquatic centres, [S07] the forty one sports pavilions, [S07] the thirty one health centre and childcare buildings, the ten community centres and hubs, [S07] the four libraries, [S07] the eight community neighbourhood houses, [S07] two municipal buildings, [S07] forty six public toilets, [S07] one resource recovery centre. There is, [S07] I won't go through everything else, [S07] but there are sixty six road and foot bridges. There are stormwater infrastructure and seven hundred and ninety hectares of open space and of course eighty four thousand street trees and a hundred playgrounds and many other numbers. This is a significant amount of work that has gone into not only thinking through what an asset plan needs to be for this city going into the future, but also making sure that we have a really clear read on what we are talking about here, [S07] folks, which is that these are the physical assets of this city we are the custodians of. I think councillor Rennie made that point before and we need to make sure that we are investing every year in both the maintenance and the upgrading as appropriate and in line with those future challenges. So I want to commend this report, [S07] commend the work and thank the officers for everything and all the respondents as well.
Thank you. [S01] Are there any further speakers? Councillor Greco?
Thank you, [S08] Mayor Messina. [S08] Look, [S08] I just want to first start by putting forward just opposing three basic points. The first one is that Northcote is declared the most livable suburb in Melbourne and we all congratulated ourselves in relation to that. The second point is, [S08] is that as part of our Darabin health and wellbeing profile, [S08] I'll read out what it says. It says that the Preston East neighbourhood includes an area known as the Northland Activity Centre. This area has the lowest FIFA index in Darabin and is ranked amongst the lowest in the country. And the third point is that we need to justify, [S08] is that the 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 community jury that we had when we developed the community vision said that no suburb should be left behind. Now, [S08] when I look at those three statements and that's what I measure up this this ten year asset plan and I ask myself, [S08] you know, [S08] does it, [S08] does it measure up? And I believe that after some deep dive into the document and all the financial information, [S08] I believe that it doesn't. And I fear that it doesn't and I fear that actually it will ingrain structural disadvantage in our community. Why do I say that councillors? [S08] I say that because when you look at the document councillors, the document talks prioritises existing assets. [S08] What does that mean councillors? That means that the status quo will continue in Malaysia to the polarisation that has occurred in our city. And will this ten year asset plan, [S08] and I come from an accounting background councillors, will this ten year asset plan actually make inroads into the socio economic disadvantage that is part of our our city? My assessment that it doesn't. [S08] If I were to look ten years ahead and say, [S08] what inroads have we made?
Ten seconds.
in addressing these areas, [S08] the socio economic disadvantaged areas in our city, I would say I fear that this asset plan will actually make any strong inroads into that. So that's why councillors, [S08] with my regret, [S08] I cannot support it.
Thank you councillor Greco. [S01] Are there any further speakers? Write a reply. [S01] Councillor Hannan?
Nothing further to add. [S02] Thank you, [S02]Mayor.
Are there, [S01] sorry, [S01] I'll put that item to the vote. [S01] All those in favour? Supported by councillor Hannan, [S01] councillor McCarthy, [S01] councillor Messina, [S01] councillor Rennie, [S01] councillor Newton. [S01] All those against? Councillor Greco, [S01] councillor Lawrence. [S01] All those abstaining? [S01] Councillor Williams and councillor Dimitriatus. [S01] Thank you. That item's been carried. [S01] The next item on the agenda is item number eight point four, the proposed lease to three K and D for the use of the former Preston Police Station land and building a five fifty nine B Roseberry Avenue, [S01] Preston. [S01] Do we have any questions to the officers? No? [S01] Councillors, [S01] do I have a motion? Councillor McCarthy and second by councillor Rennie? Councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, [S07]Mayor. [S07] Hopefully, [S07] all councillors will welcome the return of this item to the council chamber. We have had a number of decisions in relation to this matter, [S07] seeking to move ahead with providing a new home, [S07] a new base for three K and D in the former Preston Police Station. What this motion effectively does is move us ahead and I'll just read out specifically the most critical part of the motion councillor, so we're all clear on what we're doing here tonight, [S07] which of course is to endorse the proposal to proceed to community engagement for the proposed twenty year lease with three K and D for the use of the former police Preston station land and build and building at Roseberry Street in Preston. What we are doing is not just going through the process of engagement and therefore negotiation around a lease arrangement, but we are effectively investing in creating a new home for what is, [S07] I believe, [S07] Australia's, [S07] one of Australia's most important voices in the media, which of course is three K and D Cool and Deadly Radio. It is the home of some of the best radio you can find around the country and it is beamed around the country from right here in Darabin. And we should be extraordinarily proud of what we have here in this city because it connects both First Nations people and and allies and supporters and other communities together. And I think probably most, [S07] if not all councillors, [S07] have had the opportunity to go on air at three K and D and speak with the team, speak in the breakfast show or wherever it might be about their experiences as a councillor or issues before this council and to know that that those messages and that communication is being carried, [S07] sometimes not just all around, [S07] obviously Victorian Melbourne, [S07] but in fact around the country, [S07] is really heartening. And so this is a really exciting proposal to move ahead with. I'm interested to hear what the community has to say. [S07] This is important that we go through that process. But significantly, [S07] it is important that we provide certainty for three K and D through this process as well. So Mayor, [S07] I want to thank the officers for their work. [S07] I also want to acknowledge our former CEO, [S07] Sue Wilkinson, [S07] for her personal interest in this because she did an extraordinary amount of work in her time as CEO to get this over the line. And I think we need to acknowledge the work that went into that. This is not a project that comes along very often, [S07] but it is a project that if we can get it over the line and we can get it completed, will make a huge difference, [S07] not just to to three K and D, [S07] but I think in fact to the cultural fabric of this city. [S07] So thank you.
Thank you councillor McCarthy. [S01] Councillor Rennie?
Happy to reserve.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie?
Just to say, [S04] I think this is one of the most exciting things to come back to us in recent months and fittingly sits in the meeting today when we have already made a very significant decision to waive the rates for Aboriginal housing in Victoria. I think that this is a further demonstration of our commitment as a council and I'm certain this will be unanimously supported, our unanimous commitment as a council to support First Nations communities. And three K and D is in fact an extraordinary asset, [S04] not just to First Nations communities in Victoria, [S04] but to our local Darabin community.
Thank you. [S01] Councillors, [S01] I'll now put that to the vote. [S01] All those in favour? It's been carried unanimously. [S01] Thank you. [S01] Councillors, [S01] the next item on the agenda this evening, [S01] the next report is to consider is item number eight point five, the proposed lease of part of Bundura Park for the construction of operation and maintenance of a telecommunications monopole. Are there any questions to the officers? [S01] Councillors, [S01] do I have a motion? Councillor McCarthy, [S01] do I have a second, [S01] a your office, [S01] you're moving the officer's recommendation?
That's right, [S07]Mayor.
Councillor Williams? [S01] So councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, [S07]Mayor. [S07] I was going to give the opportunity for one of the the ward councillor or another councillor at the northern part of the city wish to move it, [S07] but happy to move this one. [S07] What this does is that this takes a proposal that council has received for a lease arrangement at Bundura Park for the purposes of constructing, [S07] operating and maintaining a telecommunications monopole. And of course importantly, [S07] and I think this is the case with many of these sorts of proposals, to take that proposal out to community engagement, [S07] to hear what the community has to say and of course also to bring that back to council for a decision. I don't think there's much more I need to say for that, [S07] Mayor, [S07] other than to outline that this is not the first time we've had one of these sorts of proposals come to this chamber. We are obliged to consider it, [S07] to go through that process of consultation and then of course to make a decision. And of course, [S07] there is a direct link to the provision of telecommunications bandwidth through both the four G and five G networks that are being rolled out at the moment. [S07] So this is about enabling that bandwidth and that coverage in in parts of Darabin and obviously further afield as well. [S07] I'll end it there. [S07] Thanks, [S07]Mayor.
Thank you. [S01] Councillor Williams?
Yep, [S09] as my fellow councillors already mentioned, [S09] this is nothing new. [S09] We've had these installed in other parts of Darabin and importantly, [S09] it's actually to allow further and better communication for the residents and the community as a whole.
Thank you. [S01] Are there any further speakers? [S01] Councillor Lawrence?
Yes, [S05] Mayor Messina, [S05] I understand you couldn't see my hand because it's on this side that I had raised, [S05] but would have been fairly clear for others.
Actually, [S01] can I just address that? [S01] Because you've addressed that to me. [S01] I looked around the room. [S01] I, [S01] I, [S01] it was your ward. [S01] I assumed you were going to put your hand up. [S01] I didn't see your hand, [S01] so apologies councillor Lawrence if you did.
No, [S05] no, [S05] I put my hand up.
There was, [S01] there was a debate, [S01] there was a delay and I noticed councillor McCarthy had his hand up and then councillor Williams. So I did stop and I thought I was going to move on to the next item. [S01] So there was a process.
I'm just correcting the record. Yes, [S05] so this item is actually not making a decision about this. [S05] It's actually going towards community engagement and consultation, which is the proper way for things to go. [S05] With these facilities, [S05] there's a variety of opinions in the community. People have a right to have a say in that process. [S05] There's also a set out, [S05] laid out plan for telecommunications companies themselves to operate within. So in this, [S05] in this position, [S05] we are acting as a. as a neutral agent, if you like, in a planning role to allow these things to be considered and also to allow our community to have a say.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers? As there are no further speakers, I'd like to put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors. That's been carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is item number 8.6, which is property matters. Do we have any questions to the officers? Is there are no questions? Can I ask for a motion, please, councillors? Councillor Hannan?
I'd like to move the officer's motion.
Do we have a second? Councillor McCarthy, thank you.
Would you like me to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll just be brief on this item. This item really follows on from a decision that council made last year. Was it earlier this year? I think it was last year in relation to the development of Northcote Theatre, corner of High Street and Basting Street. There is a small parcel of land there, which is on the records as council land. I think it hasn't really been used by council or members of the public as such for a long time. And I understand, correct me if I'm wrong in this instance, the owner there is prepared to take on a transfer of that land. It kind of sits within the back of the property. It would make sense, best sense for use of that property as a large public facing space for events and to be treated as such. And as far as I'm aware, there's been, it's been generally supported to transfer that land. So I'm supportive of this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Councillor McCarthy?
Sorry, withhold my right.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Williams?
We do this sort of thing all the time where we have a parcels of land continually that need to be discontinued. Council will do the right authorities by going through, advertising it through the right means, like through the Gazette, and we'll go through that process. But in hindsight, if there's no other issues or concerns, it will be allocated to the right areas of, by private treaty.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor McCarthy? I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors. That's been carried unanimously. Councillors, the next report we have to consider is item number 8.7, Darabben's Transport Strategy and Electric Vehicle Policy. Are there any questions to the officers? No questions. Councillors, do I have a motion?
I'd like to move the officer's recommendation.
Do I have a second? I noticed councillor Williams' hand is up. So councillor Newton, would you like to speak to them?
Yes, thank you, Ma'am Messina. So this is updating the Darabben Transport Strategy, which was initially put together in 2007. So it's been updated for 2022. There's lots of good stuff in here. What I wanted to focus on was the EV strategy, which is new. So I'm a big e-bike user. I ride it everywhere. And it really makes myself getting around really, really easy. I don't really have to think about traffic, don't have to think about parking. So I'm really glad that one of the changes that came through following consultation was to include e-bikes in this strategy. And also that there's a whole lot of good stuff in here. This is the first time that we've done an electric vehicle policy. And I was also in the UK recently and sort of saw what things could be like in a couple of years' time, where every service station has EV vehicle charges, council car parks due to. So what this does is put the conditions in place that mean that Darabben is setting out a policy that then private operators will be able to look into, build their EV charging infrastructure and will be able to have that across municipalities. So my sense is the EV vehicles are something that, they still feel reasonably new at the moment, but I think given a couple of years, we're going to see them absolutely everywhere. So if there's one thing that I would probably change with this policy, it's just that I think it would be good to review it in one year or two years rather than five, just because I think this is a space that's changing really, really quickly. We've got lots of survey responses and people are generally very supportive of the policy. And I think it's a really wonderful thing to have this in Darabben and make Darabben one of the leaders in this space. So, and what it means too is that for new developments, we're going to make sure there's EV charging spaces in there or the opportunity to build them if they're not there already. And publicly, we're going to have companies that build the charging infrastructure that we will lease out. So really think it's a good thing for the city. And I think it'll be really interesting to see how things go in the next couple of years and if we need to revisit it before five years.
Thank you, councillor. Question, councillor Williams?
Thank you. Yeah, it's actually excellent to see this come to council, particularly that where our council is regarding climate emergency and trying to do more in that area. And considering it's a no-brainer with the cost of petrol at the moment, that I no doubt that we have probably a few people here already that have doing already have electric bikes or electric cars. So I guess in another one or two years, I'd guarantee that that will be double the amount of people using electric bikes and cars. So I definitely look forward to where we go with this in the future.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Rennie?
Very quickly, I think it's always timely to note good news stories as well. And in fact, in this report, there is a significant good news story in relation to the Darabben Transport Strategy, which is that there's been a 15% reduction in all crashes in Darabben between 2014 and 2018, and a 59% reduction since 2007. And, you know, much of that is because of the investment councils made. And I think it speaks to the value of this type of strategy and the value that council can make. And a big part of that is reductions in speed limits. It's also worthy of noting, given that the topic's come up earlier this evening around council getting grants, that council has attracted more funding from external sources in the last five years, with an average now of $594,000 a year, up from $430,000 per year in 2014. And so I think having up-to-date strategies and being visionary pays off not just in terms of our community's wellbeing, but also in terms of our council's financial wellbeing.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors. That's been carried unanimously. The next item we have to consider is item number 8.8, the Keown Park Level Crossing Removal Project, ALXRP, Urban Design Guidelines. Councillors, are there any questions to the officers? As there are none, I'll now move over to a debate. Councillor, it'll be moved by councillor Greco and then seconded by councillor Lawrence. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to? I'm assuming you're moving the officer's recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. Look, I welcome this report and I welcome the work that officers have done in putting this report and particularly putting together the independent set of urban design principles, which is the attachment to this report. Look, I've been watching this project pretty closely. And I know that there's lots of members in the community, particularly in the northern end of our town, our city, that are really excited about this. It came as a surprise from the state government of actually having, of removing the rail crossing at that intersection, which is a very, very busy industrial intersection. And also, I must say that the traders are really excited about the, about the, about the work that's about to commence. And why they're excited is that I've spoken to many traders in that shopping strip and they've always said to me about the danger that there has been there in relation to the station because the current Keown Park station is on the Widdelsey side, where most of the passengers and travellers come from the Darabben side. So you have to cross Honeys Road, which is, and some people, you know, when they're running late for a train and things like that, can create a lot of danger. So everyone's really looking forward to this particular project. It's expected to be opened in, on 2025. And, and the community is actually, wants to be kept informed in relation to how this particular project proceeds. I think when you think about this project, it's not just a simple rail crossing removal. There is a real potential here for an urban, urban redevelopment project. That's what it really is. It's, because it's actually going to have a huge impact in relation to that end of our city. Just in relation to the report, what the officers have done, as I've said, they've prepared an urban report with some urban design principles and sketching out what the area could possibly be. This report is important because this report actually enables our advocacy when we speak to the, to the rail authority, to put forward the community and the council's desires in terms of what it wants to see in the final, in the final outcome of the project. So what this report, what we're doing here today, councillors, is that we're endorsing this report to go out to community consultation so that it can actually inform the community and build some feedback from the community so that our officers then could go armed and have a conversation with the rail authority in ensuring we maximise the benefit of what I call an urban redevelopment project. So I really look forward for this to go out to the community and look forward for the feedback that comes back and keeping a close eye on this project.
Thank you. Councillor Lawrence?
Yeah, just briefly, Ma'am Messina, look, this is a fantastic project. Obviously, it's a centre I've had something to do with over the years when we had a larger ward, a shared ward, with councillor Newton and councillor Greco. But it's also, this project's going to trigger a renaissance there. There's actually some hidden gems there. There's some hidden gems in terms of cafes. There's a fantastic Indian restaurant there. And this whole area is only really serviced by Gert's Avenue over to, to, to the east of here and this shopping strip. And so this renewal will be really great because those two little shopping strips have got amazing food, Gert's Avenue itself, and some amazing coffee. But those, those areas have been, I suppose, in the economic doldrums for a while. So this, having the station nestle next to the actual shops on our side, not that I want to steal a train station from the city of Widdelsey, but it actually makes more town planning sense to have it next to the flats, next to the actual shops. So it's going to really spark a renaissance there, and I'm very happy to see that. That's all, ma'am and ma'am.
Are there any further speakers? Before I put that item to the vote, I just want to, I have a plan in front of me. And I just want to echo councillor Lawrence's comments about the Indian restaurant and the fish and chip shop and that post office was my local. But if you look at the plan, it just shows how close proximity it is to Praise and that, and the Merry Land Centre, and also J C Donath Reserve and Keown Park Tennis Club. And I think that revitalisation of that particular precinct is going to be so beneficial, not only for the community that lives close, but also externally. I just want to commend and I want to elevate the advocacy from the minister, from the local MP for Thomas Down, Bromlin Halfpenny, and local MP here, Robin Scott, for their advocacy to ensure that this comes to light. So congratulations for all that work. And I look forward to the evolution of this. This is needed. I've heard the community say how much they have needed in this precinct. So I'm really excited that this is going to come to fruition. So councillors, can I please go to the vote for this particular item? All those in favour? Thank you. That's been carried unanimously. Councillors, the next item on the agenda is item, item number 8.9, the Govlands Report. Before I go to questions, I would like to direct the acting CEO to clarify a type, an error in the Govlands Report, and then we'll go to your question.
Thank you, Ma'am Messina. Councillor, just so I can explain that there was an error in the compilation of this report with regard to one of the confidential attachments. The meeting minutes that should be referred to from the CEO Employment Matters Committee should be the 13th of May and not the 15th of March. So proposing an adjustment to the officer recommendation to correct that and remedy that, acknowledging that those minutes have been circulated to all councils previously on the 2nd of June.
Thank you. Councillor Dimitriatis? Your question to the, oh, can I get the officers to come?
That's all right. I don't actually have a question. It's just in regards to point 10 for endorsing the, well, it's on there, but it's not in the agenda. So that's, it's on, but it's not in the agenda.
Just one moment.
Oh, as in it doesn't actually, yeah.
One moment.
But I did, oh, sorry.
Just a minor correction then, just to confirm that in the published agenda, point 10 appears to be missing the number 10 in front of it. So point 10 reads endorses the extension of the public transparency policy for two years until June 2024, appendix G to this report. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
No, I also wanted to move this officer recommendation with an amendment to point 10.
You mean amendment to point 10, yes?
Yeah, an alternate.
Okay. And are you going to put in item number nine, naming item number nine?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Do I have, so do you want to read that out? And then I'll ask for a second to councillor Dimitriatis?
Sure. I think it just reviews the policy. Let me just.
Points. We have to appoint a name for the item number nine.
I don't have the name.
Just one moment, councillors.
Appoints Jonathan Kivalides as the independent member of the council's Audit and Risk Committee for a term of three years.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councillors? Councillor Lawrence. Councillor Dimitriatis?
Ma'am, before we begin debate, could I ask a question, given that this differs from the officer recommendation?
Oh, does it? Okay.
Oh, well, that was my, councillor Dimitriatis, was it your intention to move the officer's recommendation or something different?
No, the officer's recommendation with an amendment to point 10, to read, review the policy rather than endorse the extension. I've already circulated the amendment, I think it was.
Sorry, that's why I just thought it was necessary to clarify because that was my understanding and that's not what's on the screen. And, ma'am, if I may, given that councillor Dimitriatis's intention is to move an alternate.
We're going to have a five-minute break.
No, no, it has been circulated. She's correct. It was to ask a question of the officers to understand the resource implications of the amendment that councillor Dimitriatis is seeking to move.
I haven't seen that amendment. So apologies, I have been. You just sent it, councillor Dimitriatis?
I sent it yesterday at 10:22pm.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a five-minute, just a five-minute break while everybody has a copy of that and we know what we're voting for. So we're coming back at 9:12pm. Thank you, thank you for your patience, councillors and people in the gallery and people live streaming this evening. Before we continue, I understand that there was a movement of, there is an amendment because we're amending the officer's recommendation. This is the motion, in fact, so I just want to get confirmed with councillor Dimitriades if that is.
Yes, that's correct, ma'am.
Thank you. Do I have a second, uh? Before, I might actually ask, actually might open up to questions, given that there was an, there's an amendment. So are we, councillors, are there any questions to the officers? councillor McCarthy and then councillor Hannon.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm just wanting to get clarity if I can, just to understand if I'm reading this correctly. On page 249 of the public report, it says, officers are of the view that the public transparency policy does not require any changes and can reasonably be extended for a further two years until June 2024. I just wish to understand, in making that statement, does that suggest that officers have actually already reviewed the policy in order to have come to that conclusion?
Through you, Mayor Messina. Look, a desktop review of the policy has been undertaken, and we didn't identify any sort of major problems that needed to be addressed. If the councils will to take a, I guess, a more detailed review of the document, you know, more broadly across the organisation, explore how it's functioned, we could certainly do that.
I can just ask a supplementary in relation to that.
Yep.
Just to understand, because my recollection is, this hasn't come to a briefing yet, so there hasn't been an interface yet for councillors to provide input. So the review to date has been an officer review, but we haven't had a review involving councillors. Just wanting to confirm that, that's my understanding of where we landed here. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hannon, you have a question?
No, I think it's been answered, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor. It would be helpful if I could understand the resource implications of what's proposed and whether that review would be largely an internal review consisting of a briefing with councillors or whether we're talking about something additional. And if the resources are significant, what piece of work would not occur in order for this to occur? Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mayor Messina. Thank you for the question, councillor Rennie. The implications, to be honest, in terms of resourcing, the review of the policy itself is not the biggest implication. It's actually how we bring the policy to life and how we embed transparency practices across the organisation. That's actually where the bigger impact comes, and so I think that's something we will need to assess in going through beyond a desktop review, to look at those opportunities to improve and stretch and strengthen. The key thing for us would be to ensure that whatever we come back to council with in September is something that we can live up to and commit to and deliver against, because we would never want to set a false expectation for the community if we couldn't deliver it.
Are there any further questions? No? councillor Dimitriades, I'm assuming you're moving your motion?
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
I just want to call, do I have a second, councillor Lawrence? Thank you.
So this item is about the governance report, and one of the items on there is about the transparency policy, which we've, I've just made an amendment to extend, to come back to council for review. And I believe that this is a particular, it's quite an important policy that we do look at quite strongly and in detail. And for a number of reasons, I think it does need to be reviewed. In recent years, Darabin has had many important agenda items made confidential, and that have been away from the public view by using unclear names such as, this is a contractual matter. Furthermore, there have been many instances where Darabin has made confidential items that were previously public, was previously public information based on prior meetings, and that's somehow become, it's become a confidential item all of a sudden. So I'm wanting to get a review of this and to see how we can actually make it into a formal process, if possible, even to allow councillors to challenge the idea that something should be confidential or not, basically to have a process to say that this could occur. I also think there's sections of it about boosting community engagement is important in this. It wasn't much on community engagement in these particular reports. Some of these matters have, so in the past, we've addressed matters that were previously, we've encountered matters that were previously public, then they were made confidential without any reasoning to why, and especially in the public side, we weren't, we weren't able to tell them why the item automatically became confidential. So the default position must always be transparency. I believe that when an item is confidential, the community deserves to know why it is confidential. However, currently, this is not our practice. Councillors should also be able to stand up and honestly say that Darabin is transparent as good as it can be. And in my view currently, I don't think this is the case. And I'm hoping that through reviewing the transparency policy, based on the feedback that I've got from quite a few residents, I'm hoping that this will change that and we can build confidence in the community that we are being as transparent as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Lawrence.
Yes, Mayor Messina, yeah, I initially seconded this item because it seemed it was only a couple of corrections going into an officer report. But I'm happy to second this more detailed change to the final 10-point and here because my understanding is we're not talking about some kind of major overhaul or major review of this document, which as we've heard has been, had a desktop review from staff, but more about some of, what I'd say is, you know, where we can improve transparency. And obviously, we work in an environment that's quite difficult with a lot of outsourcing and a need for commercial and confidence-type documents. But clear labelling and those sorts of things can actually improve transparency with our community so they at least know what we're voting about when we vote about it. And obviously, we still need to protect private information and commercially sensitive information.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? councillor Hannon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to talk in favour of this motion. There's a lot in it. I have some concerns about the last point, but I'll get to that in a moment. I wanted to pick up on a couple of the points around transparency, actually. This item itself is an act of transparency of the actions of our committees, councillors and mayor. You can see the list of reviews the Audit and Risk Committee has undertaken. There's a wide range of reviews there, sexual harassment, climate risk, IBAC report, actions update, information services. There's quite a long schedule that the Audit and Risk Committee has undertaken and overseen through either internal or external reviews. That's where the grilling really gets applied to all council systems and procedures to make sure that everything is, you know, upfront, transparent and working well. And I'd like to congratulate, assuming this goes ahead, Jonathan Kivalides on being appointed from his, you can see in the background there, brings very strong experience and skills from a competitive process. Also, a very sincere thanks to outgoing Audit and Risk Committee member, Craig Geddes, for very strong service to ensure our systems are up to scratch. Being transparent, there is a moderate increase there for external members based on assessment against other similar councils for sitting fees. I'd just like to set my expectation that I believe, based on the, not just my view, but community surveys, Darabin has a very high level of transparency, and so my expectation is the review would be fairly light touch for the last point. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Hannon, are there any further speakers? councillor Rennie.
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'm pleased to see that the officer's recommendation is on screen, and that's my intention to move that motion.
Fantastic. Do we have a second, uh? Second by councillor McCarthy. councillor Rennie.
Thank you. This is much like other procurement processes that we have seen come to this chamber. In fact, in this case, the services that we're seeking to procure are those of experts in the planning realm, noting that different people working in planning have different skill sets. And the workload in planning can move up and down. It doesn't make sense for council to have every person, every human resource that we might need to be able to do the job effectively on staff, and at any given point in time, we may have work that we contract out. That work can involve writing reports, it can involve attending VCAT and speaking on behalf of council and presenting council's case, it can involve strategic planning work, and it can also involve heritage services. Different planning businesses and planners have expertise in different areas. We had a process that was very highly responded to with a lot of expertise before council, and council has determined that these 16 people should be elected to our panel. The benefit of having a panel is that when a job comes up, we don't have to go out to tender on each individual job we have, which would obviously delay the process. We then have a pool of experts who we can draw on. I think that the procurement process that has been undertaken is of high quality, and I've no doubt that these people will actually serve our council well and offer great value.
Thank you. councillor McCarthy.
I think councillor Rennie's covered it really well. Other than, I just would add that in relation to the proposed. What we've seen, a lot of issues where this actually changes and so hence why the idea of being confidential one minute, then in public the next, we've seen it happen and we've questioned it. I think there also needs to be a formal process for councillors to challenge decisions made about why something is confidential or not. So I am proposing this amendment, alternate motion, to review the transparency policy for the interest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I put this item to the vote, I'd like to say something. I'm a huge fan of continuous improvement, although I'm not a fan of what some of the narrative has been in this particular chamber about our transparency, but I am all for continuous improvement and also acknowledge that there is sometimes a need for confidential items of a commercial nature to be in camera. It's coming out, it's coming out. So I'm all for it. I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? That is councillor Hanlon, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Dimitris, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence, councillor Reni and councillor Greco. All those against? Councillor Newton, that item has been carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number 8.1, statutory and strategic planning and consultants panel. Are there any questions to the officers? No? Councillors, do I have a motion? councillor Reni?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. I'm pleased to see that the officer's recommendation is on screen and that's my intention to move that motion.
Fantastic. Do we have a second? Second by councillor McCarthy. Councillor Reni?
Thank you. This is much like other procurement processes that we have seen come to this chamber. In fact, in this case, the services that we're seeking to procure are those of experts in the planning realm, noting that different people working in planning have different skill sets. And the workload in planning can move up and down. It doesn't make sense for council to have every person, every human resource that we might need to be able to do the job effectively on staff and at any given point in time, we may have work that we contract out. That work can involve writing reports, it can involve attending VCAT and speaking on behalf of council and presenting council's case, it can involve strategic planning work and it can also involve heritage services. Different planning businesses and planners have expertise in different areas. We had a process that was very highly responded to with a lot of expertise before council and council has determined that these 16 people should be elected to our panel. The benefit of having a panel is that when a job comes up, we don't have to go out to tender on each individual job, which would obviously delay the process. We then have a pool of experts who we can draw on. I think that the procurement process that has been undertaken is of high quality and I've no doubt that these people will actually serve our council well and offer great value.
Thank you. councillor McCarthy?
I think councillor Reni's covered it really well. Other than, I just would add that in relation to the proposed providers here, you know, we have an interesting mix as well, I think it's worth noting, in relation to some of the bigger firms and some of the smaller firms. What council really needs to have though is the skills, when it needs those skills, available to represent us at VCAT, to support our submissions, to support our processes throughout the statutory and strategic planning environment that we operate in, which is dynamic, ever-changing and ever-evolving, Mayor. And I think, I'd just add that one of the challenges that we have as an organisation is that we never quite know what's around the corner in terms of not just planning applications that might be coming our way, both small and large, but also state government responses that we need to be on the front foot and hence the panel approach gives us that mix of skills and I endorse the process that's gotten us to this stage.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I'll put that item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors. That's carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is item number 8.11, CT2O225, contract award for the supply and delivery of bulk fuel. Do we have any questions to the officers? There are no questions? Then we have a motion, councillors. councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, second. councillor Williams, would you like to speak to the item number 8.11?
Sure, happy to move the officer's recommendation, but also put in the wording for Ampole Australia Petroleum Pty Limited and the discounted rate is for 9.5 cents per litre. The contract will actually be for extended time, hang on. Yeah, I think it was two years? Yeah, two by one year options to be extended later down the track. So what this recommendation is, is to ensure that we are getting bang for buck for our money and...
That's right, the time clock wasn't on, sorry.
Oh, okay. It's pretty straightforward and to ensure that we are getting a good value and I'd like to thank our officers for doing the diligence of going through this process because the supply and delivery of bulk fuel is quite a tricky thing at the moment, as we all know that fuel is going through the roof.
Thank you, councillor Williams. councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd just add that obviously, even tonight, we were talking about electric vehicles and obviously council is seeking to and progressively moving its fleet across to electric and hybrid vehicles. However, the reality is, is that we don't actually have at this stage the vehicles available for all the different council functions. So as we are in that transition process, we still have to purchase fuel and hence the contract that we have before us. So it is one of those necessary things at this point in time, but not our preferred energy supply. In saying that though, obviously as part of council's climate emergency commitment and our commitment to being carbon neutral, we do offset our emissions from fuel and I would say that with a two-year contract and with that option to extend, the situation could be very different in a couple of years' time in terms of the availability of different vehicles for the different services that council has to function. I'll end it there. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, councillors. That's carried unanimously. The next item is item number nine, notices of motions. Item number 9.1, Darabhan Council citizenship ceremonies. councillor Newton, I'm assuming you're moving the motion and it's because it's your motion and I just wanted to confirm that that is your motion?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second by councillor McCarthy. councillor Newton?
Thank you, Mayor Messina. So this is something that we've been dealing with for the last five years, where our 26th January declaration from August 2017 talked about not celebrating on the 26th of January and not holding citizenship ceremonies on that day. So since then, we've had, we have not had the ability to conduct any citizenship ceremonies, which was a decision that was made by the federal government, which I think was very unfair and I'm sure most people will agree with me. What it's meant is that citizens that live in Darabhan, that become Australian citizens are not able to have a citizenship ceremony with mayor, councillors, MPs, et cetera. And in our case, the Wurundjeru Wurung people, as well as the Darabhan National Advisory Committee, so they just go through an administrative process. One of the things I talked about in the rationale for this is that in the meanwhile, while we haven't had the ability to conduct citizenship ceremonies, we have had things like the Njuul Nunyan event, which included a welcome to country for the new citizens, we had a morning tea, which was fantastic, but with the election of a new Labor federal government and an Albanese federal government, I think there's a real opportunity here to write to Linda Burney and write to Angie Giles and request that we get our citizenship ceremonies returned. I think this would align very strongly with what Albanese talked about in his speech and the direction that our federal government is going in now, which I think is quite different to the government that we've had before for the last nine years. So I hope that this will be supported unanimously and I look forward to seeing what the response is.
Thank you, councillor Newton. councillor McCarthy?
Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to thank and congratulate councillor Newton on her initiative in bringing this to the chamber. There was always going to be a point in time when we would be making this request. We were always, I suppose, anticipating that that wouldn't be under the previous government, but under a future government. We have that now, Mayor. And I think it's fair to say that when Darabhan Council lost its rights to confer citizenship upon new citizens, which many of us have had the experience and the joy of doing in this very room, on that very stage, going back many years, it was a tragedy and a travesty, but it was also something which I know at the time, members of the opposition, who are now the government, had expressed sympathy for the strong moral position that we'd taken as a city in favour of no longer recognising January 26 and instead listening to the voices of our First Nations leaders and First Nations communities here in Darabhan, not just the Wurundjeru Wurung, but also the many other people for whom, who have a long, many thousands of years connection to this land, but in fact come from different countries. So we have heard directly from individual MPs and members of the opposition in the past about their support for what we did and the stance we took, but they were not in a position to take the sort of action that I think we're asking them to do now. And this is an earnest request and I'm sure, knowing the calibre of the people that we are referring to here, that they are people that understand why this is important, that we can find that balance between both recognising our First Nations folk and hearing very clearly their wish, but also creating that opportunity for citizenship to be conferred in this city by people that wish to be part of that. That doesn't have to happen on the 26th of January because in fact, as we know, Darabhan had about six or seven citizenship ceremonies throughout the year and actually conferred citizenship on many more people outside of that particular day. So I welcome it and thank you, councillor Newton.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Before I put that item to the vote, I just want to say, I want to congratulate councillor Newton. This is really important for our community, but as a daughter of migrants who are given their citizenship certificate in this very hall, I can tell you how much it means to the residents that reside here. So I'd like to put that all to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.2, which is library fees. councillor Reni, would you like to move your motion?
Moved as on-screen, thank you.
Do we have a second? councillor McCarthy?
Thank you, councillor McCarthy and a significant thanks to the staff team that helped me with the drafting of this motion to make sure that it was achievable. I'm very interested in activating our libraries and in increasing the number of people who use our libraries and in fact that is an action in our council plan. One of the things that may get in the way of people using libraries and continuing to use libraries is library fines. And we do hear from people in the community who say, oh, well, I stopped going to the library because I knew I'd have to pay a fine if I walked back in the door. That is not a good outcome. It's not a good outcome for community members, it's not a good outcome for families and children who might miss out and it's not a good outcome for our libraries and our library staff who invest so much. Library fines were introduced in the rationale many, many, many years ago, was that this would encourage people to return library items on time. Obviously, that's a very laudable kind of thing that we want to do, it would be great if everyone returned them not a day late. Unfortunately, library fines have been found to be a fairly ineffective mechanism at getting things back on time and there are other mechanisms that can be put in place. So if they're not serving the purpose of helping people get things back on time and if they are potentially discouraging some users from continuing to use the library, then it does raise the question of why are we doing it? Obviously, we get a little bit of revenue and that's why it's not just a stroke of a pen to say, let's get rid of them, we need to understand the implications and that's why I'm asking for a report. I know that many libraries have actually gone down this path already and I hope that that's where we land, but I will watch with interest the report that comes back. I think this is a significant equity issue because the family is most likely to stop using the library, those families that will struggle to pay the $20 or $30 or $40 fine. It's also worth noting that this would not apply to people who lose books, those books would have to be paid for. So we are talking strictly about overdue fines for items and I think that probably the people in our community's impact on most are families with young children who tend to borrow picture books by the pile. Library fines, if you take out one book and keep it for a few extra days, aren't significant, but if you take out a pile of 20 picture books and your kids are having a lovely time reading them and increasing their early literacy and their language skills, which is all fantastic. If something happens in your family or you're in two weeks late with your pile of 20 or 30 books, then that adds up quickly and, you know, that's not what we want. So from an equity point of view, I think this is a really important measure.
Thank you, councillor Reni. councillor McCarthy?
Mayor, I don't have anything really to add other than to say, getting rid of fines is a fine idea and thank you councillor Reni for taking the initiative.
Are there any further speakers? councillor Greco?
Yeah, just in relation to this, I remember a number of years ago when we were doing the library strategy, we discussed the issue of fines and unfortunately, we didn't follow through in regards to reviewing how we impose our fines. The interesting work that came out of that was that some libraries, particularly interstate, have done away with fines, but not only have they done away with fines, they've also devised a system of engaging and the ones that were imposed, fines if you like, of in a sense, giving back to the library in some form of doing community service. Rather than shooing people away, there's a way of actually drawing them in into the library system and ensuring that they remain engaged and that they, in a sense, in inverted commas, paid back in time rather than in money and that also kept them engaged with the library system. So I look forward to see what our officers come up with and it'd be good if we could come up with something that's quite innovative, engages rather than disengages our library users.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Are there any further speakers? I'll put this item to the vote. All those in favour? Thank you, that's been carried unanimously. Item number 10, urgent business. I understand there's an item of urgent business that was circulated earlier, so we will need a, it's not, wasn't noted on the agenda, but we will need a procedural motion to... we'll need a procedural motion for, oh! This is a procedural motion to allow for a report to come to the July council meeting about the Northcote Golf Course operating model to be admitted as an item of urgent business. So I'm calling for a procedural motion. All those in favour?
Sorry, we need a move in a second, Mayor. I'm happy to move.
Move the second, move over the procedural motion and then a second, sorry. Move it by councillor, second by councillor McCarthy. All those in favour? That's been carried unanimously. councillor Greco?
Sorry, Mayor, I don't think it was carried unanimously.
Oh, can I, I thought I saw all those in favour? Oh, I'm sorry. Those against? Sorry, it wasn't. Thank you, councillor. So that's councillor Hanlon, councillor Williams, councillor McCarthy, councillor Dimitris, councillor Messina, councillor Lawrence, councillor Reni and councillor Greco. All for and against councillor Newton noted. I beg your pardon. councillor Greco?
First of all, I'd like to thank councillors for including this as part of our business tonight. Look, the motion that I'm pulling forward after receiving advice from our officers in terms of the crafting of the motion, is basically to correct some of the confusion that was created at the last council meeting, when we endorsed a motion that basically called for a briefing to come to council. And what this motion, and there's been a bit of confusion and there's been a bit of duplication in work in relation to that particular motion and actually, you know, I suppose I would have, you know, say, you know, that we need to, you know, an apology to our officers in relation to the work that that has created. So what this motion therefore does is that, given that councillors have received a briefing in relation to, as per the instructions of the previous motion that was passed by council regarding the Northcote Golf Course, what this motion then does is that it actually calls for a report to come to council in the July meeting so that we can receive a report on which options we need to go forward with in regards to our future tendering process. So we're not making a decision tonight on what that future, or what the model should be. All we're doing is ensuring that a report does come to council and so that the councillors actually can view that report, read that report, consider that report and then make a decision about how we want to tender for the, in relation to the Northcote Golf Course and what sort of management model we want to tender for. But that's what the purpose of this motion is. I think it's important that we endorse this motion and it's important for a number of reasons. One is to remove the stress on our offices, provides clarity, but I think most importantly and it picks up on a theme that we talked about earlier tonight, is the theme of transparency. What this does, that if a report comes to council in July, then the council can make an open and transparent decision about which way it wants to go in relation to the management model that it wants to tender for. And I think that's important that we do that. And why it is important again is that because there's a lot of interest in this particular issue and we should be as transparent as possible in each step of the way in going towards a tender. So I ask for council support in relation to this urgent motion.
Thank you. second?
Thanks, Mayor. I was happy to second this. One of the, as the councillor who has the particular location, the Northcote Golf Course in my ward, I know that this is an issue of great interest to the community and there's great desire to see the best possible outcome to optimise the use of the site from the broadest range of our community as possible. There is a lot of interest in what's going to happen on-site here. Obviously, council has made a decision around the spatial requirements and that decision was made at a recent meeting. What is now part of council's consideration is what the model of operation could be and council has a range of options here. So whilst we may have a report come to us, should this motion succeed in July, there's a range of different ways that council may go and we're not determining that this evening, but I'm really pleased to see, and I thank councillor Greco for specifically mentioning the possibility and the proposal that was explored at the last council meeting of including a golf up until 3pm and then following that, making the broader public access, because that was something that we heard through submissions and giving serious consideration to what is called temporal sharing is really important. There are other models of temporal sharing as well, days of the week and other sorts of approaches. This motion here asks officers to bring back those models for us to consider and I think being able to give the community some certainty about what's on the table, what's not on the table, I think is actually right and good. I think there's also a lot of interest and I think councillor Greco made the point already, which is that there is a lot of interest in this and we want to make sure that we are not having officers do work that doesn't go anywhere, but also that we make sure that we provide an opportunity for the market to really feed back to us as well about what they think can work. So I think that moves us one step closer and I'll end it there, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? As there are no further speakers, I'll put this motion to, urgent motion to the vote. All those in favour? That's carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Councillors, there's no further reports, items of urgent business, item number 11, consideration of reports considered confidential, there are no confidential reports to consider this evening. Item number 12, there's no further items to consider this evening, I'd like to declare this... I'd like to declare this meeting closed at 9.50pm. I'd like to thank the officers, members of the gallery and staff, and my fellow councillors for attending this evening, and I look forward to further debates in the future. Thank you.